The Mendocino County Board of Supervisors is called to order on March 1st. And we will go to the clerk for the roll call, please. Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Pinches?
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here. And I would ask Jackie Carvillo to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now go to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Please fill out a form at the back of the room and bring it forward to the clerk. And I will begin in the order I received these. And again, these are for items not on the agenda. You will have three minutes for your comments. And please state your name for the record. We'll go first to Terry Wilcox.
I have a letter that I wrote last year. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you for allowing me to be here. To the Board of Supervisors, Mendocino County, March 4th, 2010. On the issue of funding for veterans services in our county, please do not cut any services to our transportation services or any of the VSO services in Ukiah or Willets or Fort Bragg. For the men and women who have served the county, these services already are stretched to a thin line. A further insult to those of us who gave time, energy, blood, and spirit in the best, in the interest of our community, families, country, would be a telling stroke of ignorance and apathy on the part of a small, very powerful group who should be stewards of this county. Look and listen to vets who make the trips to Fort Miley, the VAMC for their medical care, and go to Ukiah Clinic VA outpatient facility. All these facilities make a whole system of care. All parts are indispensable. Do not lose our trust. Sincerely, Terry L. Wilcox, Willets, California. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. We'll go to Luke Gardner.
My name is Luke Gardner, and I am also against the proposed closing of the Veteran's Service Offices. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to protest against the proposed closing of the Mendocino County Veteran's Service Office. The VSO provides valuable services and fills a very large niche which no other office or person can. It aids not only veterans but their dependents as well. This office provides help to veterans and their families all over Mendocino County by having knowledgeable staff on hand to answer questions, help with paperwork, and perhaps most importantly, provide van rides to the San Francisco Hospital. For dependents and young vets going to college, this office also provides work-study. This is the only office in Lake, Mendocino, or Sonoma Counties to do so. Not only do the younger people gain valuable work experience, it also provides them with jobs. Jobs which are paid for out of federal funds, which means it is free money for our county's economy. These jobs allow us to patronize stores here in Ukiah and by necessities we otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. Or we shop at stores like Shots, GameStop, the used bookstores, Walmart, and Rainbow Ag. If the VSO is closed down, not only would you be doing a disservice to those who fought to secure our freedoms, but you would also place an unreasonable burden on the Social Security Offices which would have to take over the VSO duties. In addition, you would be putting multiple students out of work, which is money lost for the county coffers. Thank you for your time and consideration in this manner.
Thank you, Luke. Dallas Watson? Followed by Lee Farr.
I'm a veteran over at the Veteran's Service Office, and I work over there as a work-study. And I see firsthand how many people that the Veteran's Service Office helps. And it would just be a shame if it was shut down. The veterans over there that get the van rides especially are the ones that really need the help, and they would be lost without that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, followed by Bob Kenklini.
My name is Lee Farr. I'm here today representing SEIU as their chapter president for SEIU Local 1021. I presented you with 664 signatures. And these are just not names on a piece of paper. These are county workers and members of the community that want you to know that the atmosphere in the county has changed dramatically in the last year. Many county employees accept unemployment not just as a job, but as an opportunity to serve our community. There was once a hopeful atmosphere in our work environment that said we were working to better, for the betterment of our community and to serve the public and the county. Our views were considered, and it mattered that we were part of the bigger picture. We are submitting these petitions to say that we would like respect put back into the workplace. The county is dramatically understaffed at a time when the need for services are reaching dramatic levels. It's justable enough, but when you add the atmosphere of skepticism, fear, intimidation, and a complete devaluation of our work, it is demoralizing. For those of us that are still employed, and for those who have left because the work environment has become intolerable, we're asking you to do your best to reinstate the commitment to the value, to value your workers and the services they provide to the community. This is a job. We provide a service, and we deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Lee, just one comment. Because of the volume of the signatures, I'll ask that the clerk put that in a routing file, and so it can circulate to all of the board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bob Kenklini. I am the Finance Officer and Adjutant at the Sequoia Post 96, the American Legion of Fort Bragg. Briefly, you know, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the American Legion Post Auxiliary and how it uses, how it works with the Veteran's Service Office in Fort About 12 years or so ago, the only service officer for Mendocino County, Veteran's Service Officer, who came over to the coast a half a day, once a week. Sometimes, he wouldn't come at all. That was 10 to 12 years ago. Now, it's changed dramatically. Those changes were made when Rick Buckman came on as Veteran's Service Officer from Mendocino County. What he did, first thing he did, he moved out of the Avala Center Office where he was to the Veterans Memorial Building in Fort Bragg. Because this is where the veterans can really know where to come, to get the advice and help they need. Now, over that period of time also, the word was put out that we're going to serve the entire Mendocino County coast, from Westport all the way down to Walala. As a matter of fact, I traveled with the Veteran's Service Officer to Walala one time, introduced him to the local newspaper, and introduced him to Bob Sunstrom, who owned the building down there in the shopping mall where he could possibly meet with veterans within that particular area. Then, as time evolved, there was an assistant to the Veteran's Service Officer under the work-study program to the College of Redwoods. And this was a dramatic change there also. Now, the Veteran's Service Office is vital to us, to the American Legion Post and Auxiliary, because we depend upon that Veteran's Service Officer to verify that a veteran in need is truly a veteran. Because it comes to my mind of an incident that occurred one time when we had a dinner in Fort Bragg. A couple came into the building, and they said, he said he was a veteran, he needed help. They were traveling through, maybe going to Oregon or somewhere, so they needed help. Well, we couldn't verify that he was a veteran. He didn't have proof he was a veteran. And so, one of our members took out a $20 bill and handed it to him. We gave them a dinner, which we were having. Lo and behold, two days later, that couple was still there on the coast with their hands out, getting wherever they could. So it came to prove that he was not a veteran. That's why we need a Veteran's Service Officer to verify that we do have their needs there. One of those things that we work with the Veteran's Service Officer, if I may please, I'd like to continue just briefly. The American Legion Auxiliary during the year has funds through the POPY program, and they work with the Veteran's Service Officer in Fort Bragg to provide $50 grocery cards to Safeway or to Harvest Market. The Veteran's Service Officer verifies the veteran in need has that need for that card, and that's the only way that we'll know. This amounts to over $1,000 a year, and this is by voluntary contribution from the Auxiliary. Also, there are times when there is a need for a motel room. There are funds available that is provided to the Veteran's Service Officer to help up a particular veteran. This is all free money, not on the county. Now, another one is the van drivers. The van drivers are volunteers. They leave Fort Bragg at 5:30 in the morning, they go to Fort Miley in San Francisco, arrive back at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Like I say, they're volunteers. They put in a long day. Some of those volunteers put in hundreds of hours a year. And it's important. If you do away with that van service, that veteran who resides there in the Fort Bragg area or in the Mendocino Coast area won't have a way to get to Fort Miley. Some of us can, but there are a lot of them that cannot. So it's important that we do have someone who can coordinate the calendar and the times, et cetera, for those veterans. One other thing that occurred through the Veteran's Service Officer, he coordinated the painting of the Fort Bragg Veterans Memorial Building. The county supplied the paint, but we had the volunteers, veterans, and I think even some non-veterans, who helped to paint the exterior of that building. It looks great. These are the things that why we do not do away with the Veteran's Service Officer. It's an important position, and please, keep that in on as we are now. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak as long as I did.
Thank you, Bob. And I think you well point out with your examples, the community and the county partnership that we have had in place and how it really has improved over the years. It's very true. Don Hune? Followed by John Walker. Oh, Val, it's, we're going to Don. He's next.
Okay.
Okay, but we'll get to you.
Good morning. My name is Don Hune. I'm a resident of Redwood Valley for the last 20 years. The Veterans, VSO office is invaluable to us veterans. It allows someone with knowledge to go through the mountains of paperwork that is not necessary for the veterans to follow claims, or to file claims with the government. They seem to have a habit of overloading the veteran with the different forms, et cetera, et cetera, that are unnecessary. And only through the VSO are we able to cut through that and get down to the nitty-gritty and submit the paperwork that's actually needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. John?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Supervisors. I'm delighted to be here. May I remind you that day before yesterday, the last living person of World War I passed away. Is that a big deal? I hope to tell you it is. I'll be 89 next month, and I'm getting there. And if you were sitting where I was sitting, you could see the veterans that stand here, and we're all wearing hearing aids. There's nothing I'd like to have better back than my hearing. That 3-inch-50 gun on the bow of the ship just knocked me, my head back, and we, as a 21-year-old person, we couldn't care less. So veterans are a big deal. It's not something you slight under the floor like anyone else. They are the foundation of our citizenry of the United States of America. And you know what? I don't know about you, but I feel that any service that you can provide for the veterans is well, well-received. I have not met a veteran yet that is not thankful for everything that they get. I want to show you I am thankful to be here today. I don't know how I got through the war. I literally do not know how I got through the war. And the rest of these brothers know the same way. So we thank you for your time and dedication, and please, when you think of veterans, think of people that are important. They're a big deal. Thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Phil Dow, representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1900. I'm the, I'm a nothing right now, but I'm the immediate past commander, and I just wanted to add my support to the, for the Veteran's Service Officer and the programs he provides, not only for the World War II veterans and the Korean and the Vietnam veterans such as myself, but in my mind, mainly for the younger people that are coming back, the younger men and women who need these type of services much more than I do. And I just wanted to tell you that the Veterans of Foreign Wars has a presence here this morning, just to keep that in front of you as you make it through the budget process. We all know, I know every one of you, and we all know the kind of things you have to go through in the budget process. I was just in a meeting with Supervisor Pinches yesterday, doing much the same kind of thing. So I just want to make sure that the VSO office is in the forefront of your thinking and make sure that you know that the Post 1900 is behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Derek Shaw. I'm Senior Vice Commander of VFW Post 1900. With regards to the Veteran's Service Office, the reason that myself and my family are able to continue to live here in Mendocino County is when I got out of the Marine Corps, it was the Veteran's Service Office who took me under their wing and helped me out through the mountains of paperwork Don Hune discussed. Without a service like that in this county, I don't, I don't know where I would be. I would be, I would have been completely lost. I probably wouldn't have been able to live here. They help, they continue to help myself and my family and many, many veterans out with the paperwork. My, my family is on CHAMP VA for our medical insurance. Whenever we have a problem with CHAMP VA, we call the Veteran's Service Office. Without that link, we would have no one to contact here. Where would we have to go? Sonoma County? Lake County? They're, they've got enough veterans there. I understand the budget is really tight, and there's things that have to be cut. I understand times are tough. The two places that I do not think should be cut are the men and women who have served this country and the men and women in law enforcement who are currently serving in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With regards to the veterans topic, which has been one of significant comment this morning, we have nothing on the agenda per se before us today on this, on this topic. I think it's a twofold issue with Veteran's Service Funds coming from the state of California, and there's a lot going on on that, and our Veteran's Service Officer does a good job of keeping us informed on, on, on that issue, as does the executive office going out in terms of what legislative and gubernatorial actions might be occurring on that front. So that's one funding stream. And then, of course, at the local decision-making, we have our, our general fund dollars, and there is a general fund contribution that does go to the Veteran's Service, the multiplicity of Veteran's Services in the county. So I think it's great that we've heard from all of you here today, and your repeated times here, I think, educate us each time about a component of what the service delivery system is. And it's good also that you know the challenges we face in making the budgetary decisions. Those are all the forms I have before me for public comment. I do have one more form, and that would go to a topic as we move through the agenda. Again, this is just public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move-
We got one more here.
One more? Please do. State your name for the record.
My name is Arthur Sands.
Into the microphone, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Arthur Sands. I work in the county through the state of California. I'm not here as a representative, but that's what I do. I work with veterans every day with Operation Welcome Home and Veterans Employment Services at the EDD. And I got to tell you that the county Veteran's Service Office, the officers there are invaluable to the veterans in this county. I can't imagine what would happen if a veteran had to go to Sonoma, or Humboldt, or some other county to get services. The, the services brought into the county through the benefits that the veterans have earned, I believe, far outweigh anything that the state or the county puts into it as far as dollar values go. But I know that I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for a county Veteran's Service Officer and another veteran that pulled me under their wing. And, sorry, it's, it's an emotional moment. I would have been homeless, and after I got back from Iraq. So anyways, I just want to say that I think it's very important, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come forward.
My name is Janice Marcel. I have a special interest in veterans, women veterans in particular. I am not a veteran. I just recently graduated Sonoma State and did a project about the homeless issue with women veterans. I am a resident of Willets and a local person from Fort Bragg. I participate in a lot of the veterans' functions that go on with my mother, who's 90 now. And I'm very concerned for, I have a relationship with Carl from VSO and some of the people for the office here in Ukiah, and I just volunteered and said, what can I do to help? So I showed up here today to let you know that there are also women veterans. They're not represented. I don't see any here this morning, but there's a lot of women veterans that need the services that don't always come up and come out to the regular Veteran's Service Offices. There's still a stigma about that being for male veterans, and we're working on that to help them feel more comfortable. Sonoma County, as you know, has a lot of services for veterans, and I'd like to see that being vamped up here as we realize the numbers of veterans that live here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move forward now to Agenda Item Number Four, the Consent Calendar. Would the clerk establish proper notice, please?
Yes, proper notice has been established.
Okay, we'll go to the consent items. The Chair will pull Item Number 11 for future consideration this afternoon with the companion Agenda Item. Any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, is it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull just really briefly Items 5, 9, 15, and 16.
Okay.
And I don't have a lot to say about any of them, but I just don't want them to float by without any notice.
All righty. So Supervisor Hamburg, let's, we've got the time. Now let's move forward with your items.
So you want to talk about those?
Yes. Yes, if you're thinking that they may.
Madam Chair, generally, we approve the balance of it, then we move on to the different items unless we're just doing a question or something.
I think it's, I think it's, he said it was just really a brief, brief comment.
They're, they're, they're quick things.
That's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the inspections that were done of our schools conducted by the MCOE. And I just, I just thought it was very noteworthy that under this so-called Williams settlement that all of the, I think all of the schools, it's like all of the schools in our county were inspected for their, you know, the safety and the overall suitability of school facilities. And, you know, I think it, I think it's a real benefit that these kinds of inspections are done because we're all aware that the physical plant, you know, the, the actual school where a lot of our kids are being educated are often kind of, kind of shabby, kind of shaky. And it's something that really bothers me as somebody who used to be an educator. I mean, it seems to me that our schools should be our most beautiful buildings, you know, our most welcoming buildings, places where our kids can be really happy to be and really proud to be. So, you know, be that as it may, our schools in our county don't meet my glowing description, but I was glad to see that there is a serious site inspection of the schools where things are noticed, you know, stained ceiling tiles and light fixtures that don't work and drinking fountains that are out of commission and that at least it's being noticed, it's being evaluated, and the things that are subpar are being corrected. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay. Comments well noted.
And then on item nine, it was just interesting to me to see that we're contracting for group home services with a company that's based in Redding, Stockton, Santa Rosa, and somewhere called Perris, California, P-E-R-R-I-S. And, you know, just bring up that, brought up that same question that, you know, J.R. Rose, I don't see him in the audience today, but he's often here.
He's here.
You hear J.R. often saying, you know, why, you know, this is something we ought to be able to do internally. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing, you know, Stacy Cryer or Susan Arrow or Department. The fact of the matter is we don't have these group home facilities in our county. But my question is, why not? And here's $337,000 going to a company that is based in all these counties that are not Mendocino County. And, you know, just to comment, I think, I hope we can do better at some point in the future. Item fifteen, I just wanted to note that I see an irony in the fact that we're proclaiming this month as Women's History Month in the same, during the same meeting when we're considering doing away with our family planning services. And it seems to celebrate women's history on one hand and then to eliminate a very important service that women have fought to get access to, family planning services. It's not something they were given. It's something they fought for and it's an important part of their history that they fought and continue to fight to today sadly. And, you know, we as a county are kind of on the verge of, of doing away with family planning. Now, maybe some other agencies are going to take that up and that'll be, that'll be acceptable, but I just had to note the irony there. And then with respect to item sixteen, I really think it would be appropriate if we read this resolution rather than simply approving it because I think this is something that's of great importance to the board, it's of great importance to the future of the county, the county's economy, the county's environment. Supervisor Brown has taken a, a real lead in this area and I want to acknowledge that. And I just think this resolution should be read rather than simply, you know, rubber stamped.
Supervisor Hamburg, to your comments, just for some historical perspective on item number nine, I believe, at least I think, that all supervisors here present have commented on your, your concern on that historically. It's been a topic of discussion for three or four years, I believe. And I know specifically Supervisor McCowen has, I know that I have, that there's a real concern about the dollars going out of county and the need to continue to look for partnerships so those dollars and those placements can remain in Mendocino County. As to item number fifteen, sponsored by Supervisors Brown and Smith, there will be an event, the annual event, always a well-attended and very important cultural event for celebrating Women's History Month and the proclamation will be read, will be read at that event. And we encourage participation and attendance in that. It's.
And that's on, excuse me, Madam Chair, that's Sunday at the Saturday Afternoon Club.
That's correct.
Okay, and Senator Noreen Evans is going to be the keynote speaker.
Yes. And that will be, once again, I predict, an excellent event. It always, it always is and it's always heartfelt and there's always new information provided and local women are always celebrated. And I concur with your idea of reading the, the resolution for item number sixteen. So if you would like to do that when we finish the comments, I would support that.
I'd be happy.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, maybe we could go ahead and pass it and then read it right after the passing.
Sure.
And I would like to add to the comments on item nine. It is the policy of this board and it's the policy of the administration to try to build the capacity within the county so that we're limiting the out-of-county placements. You know, it's kind of two-part. They're doing everything they can to avoid placements, which is, you know, often it's not the most therapeutic approach. And then along with that, if placement is necessary, they are working to develop the capacity here for all of the reasons that you cited. So it's just a, a situation that it, you know, it takes time to, to find the people who are willing to make the investment and have the proper facility. But that's the direction the department's been moving in for at least a couple of years. So I will move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item eleven, which will be considered with item six B.
Second.
Don't you want to pull item sixteen too, to read the?
Well, we're going to do it after.
Okay.
Passage, lump it all together.
Second.
Second, so a motion by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously and we'll go to the reading of sixteen. I think that's an excellent idea because it does put those concepts right out.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Have we had public comment? Did you call for that?
No, we have not. Thank you for that. Thank you for that reminder. Public comment on the agenda, consent, any item, with the exception of item number eleven. Seeing none, we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Hamburg.
I'd be happy to yield to Pauline. She reads so beautifully.
Oh.
Or Supervisor Brown.
Supervisor Brown might want to read it.
I'll let the clerk.
Resolution number eleven.
I can go ahead. Do you have it there?
It's in the pack.
Okay. No.
One last effort.
Proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors recognizing March 2011 in Mendocino County as Women's History Month.
No, no, no.
No.
The food security.
The following one. Number sixteen.
We're going to do that one on Sunday. This one today.
All right. I apologize. Resolution of Mendocino County Board of Supervisors to recognize and support the establishment of Mendocino County Food Policy Council, whereas one in eight Americans sought food assistance at food banks last year, representing an increase to forty-six percent since 2006. And whereas the number of U.S. seniors living alone who seek help from food pantries and soup kitchens increased eighty-one percent from 2006 to 2008. And whereas in 2008, eighteen point five percent of Californians' children aged zero to seventeen lived in families that struggled to put food on the table. And whereas thirty-eight percent of low-income Mendocino County residents were unable to afford enough food in 2007. And whereas food assistance organizations in Mendocino County are experiencing unprecedented levels of demand for their services. And whereas poverty and lack of access to nutritious food has been shown in, to result in poor health among children as evidenced by high rates of nutrition-related diseases, including diabetes and obesity. And whereas sixty-three percent of Mendocino County adults reported being overweight or obese in 2007. And whereas Mendocino County farmers sell an average of one hundred and ten million crops and livestock while spending an average of one hundred and twenty-eight million to raise them, creating an average loss of eighteen million per year. And whereas sixty-five million of farmers' expenses are going to sources outside the county for farm inputs such as fertilizer and lime, petroleum products, seed, feed, and livestock. And whereas two hundred and ten million of the two hundred and thirty-three million that Mendocino County consumers spend on food each year goes to producers outside the county, resulting in a total of potential wealth of two hundred and ninety-three million lost each year from the way food is produced and purchased. And whereas research demonstrates that when healthy foods are affordable and accessible, people eat more of them, resulting in improved health and fewer chronic illnesses. And whereas Mendocino County has rich history of growing its own food, a favorable climate, arable land, and hard-working, knowledgeable farmers. And whereas if every Mendocino County resident buys just fifteen percent of his or her food directly from local farmers, it will, it will result in twenty million of new farm revenue each year. And whereas promoting healthy local foods may be the best path toward economic recovery. Whereas over two hundred and ten people attended four local healthy food summits in Mendocino County in May 2010 and made commitments to grow and purchase more food locally. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and supports the establishment of an independent Mendocino County Food Policy Council, which will advise the board on food and farming matters at least twice yearly. The Food Policy Council's mission is to collaborate with institutions, businesses, and public at large to rec, to create a sustainable local food system that reduces hunger, increases health, and expands economic vitality. The Food Policy Council will increase food security for all current and future generations, especially the least served, by ensuring the availability and accessibility of a wide variety of local, safe, sustainably grown, and nutritious foods.
Thanks, Pauline.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Supervisors Brown and Hamburg for moving this forward. I think it's really, it's an important issue and I think it's of great value to the entire county.
Madam Chair, I would just like to concur with that. And just like the localization of the services for treatment, if more people would buy more of their food from our local providers, that would be a tremendous economic stimulus to the local economy. So, so thanks to Supervisors Hamburg and Brown for highlighting this and bringing it forward.
Thank you.
I'm glad we have that read into the record. We'll move on now since we have a sometime before a timed presentation. Two supervisors report.
We have minutes.
Oh.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the minutes.
Minutes. Yes, skip the minutes. Okay. We only have one set. That's February fifteenth. We can move approval if the board desires.
I'll move approval of the minutes for February fifteenth. And we actually had two sets, the regular meeting and special session.
Yes, and in discussion with the clerk supervisor, those were not included in the noticing, so what we're going to do is just move ahead with the one set today.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Hearing none, passes unanimously. So we will go to item seven, which is seven A, B, and C. These are supervisor reports. We did not meet last week. We did not really have much time because of the full agenda at the previous meeting. So supervisors' reports were really not given their fair, I think, time on the agenda. So I asked the clerk to make sure that time was built in for them today. So we'll have two opportunities, both this morning to divide it up somewhat, depending on how long it will take. And then also there'll be another opportunity for supervisors this afternoon to make comments on your various assignments and other meetings attended. So, board members? Anyone have any comments?
Supervisor Smith, I would like to wait till this afternoon. Mine is quite lengthy and.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
If others have it, and I know you have.
I have, I have some for this morning.
A lengthy report as well that might lead into discussion.
Sure. So I have two reports, seeing, any, any other board members that want to comment on any?
I've got a couple of brief ones, but go ahead.
Okay. So I have two. On February second, as board members are aware, I traveled to Sacramento and I attended two hearings. I attended the hearing on the North Coast Marine Life Protection Act Array discussion before the Fish and Game Commission. And also I attended the Board of Forestry review of the Jackson Advisory Group's final report called A Vision for the Future. And I have circulated, I don't think all board members have had a chance to see it, but I did circulate for board members a copy of the agenda item from the Board of Forestry on the Jackson Advisory Group. I think the report was three years in the making and it was an excellent and comprehensive review, lots of work on trying to build consensus in this process. They had the rating scale at the back of the visioning statement for the Board of Forestry on how they were able to reach decision. I think it's an excellent document. There were many, many of those from Mendocino County that did attend to present in front of the Board of Forestry. I did make some brief comments as well. It was very well received. The Board of Forestry was really very encouraging and supportive, as was the CAL FIRE staff that were there on the work that has really happened at the grassroots level in Mendocino County. So if the public wants a copy of this, we have it and I have it for board members that may not have seen it. The MLPA discussion went on all day in Sacramento and I was able to go to that in the morning and then return after the Board of Forestry. And it was a comprehensive reporting in. I think there were, was diversity of opinion. There were those that were supporting the no alternative position, that were, were there and very vocal and really gave good comment to, to the Fish and Game Commission. And then there were those that were supporting the Unified Array and those were from Del Norte, Humboldt, and Mendocino Counties, all very well represented. The audience was, was quite full and the attendance really lasted all day. So it was a really, it was a very good day, I felt, and there were, there were PowerPoint presentations and lots of detail given to, to the members of the commission. And they seemed truly and sincerely interested and they were, they were very concerned with and focused on the discussions of tribal sovereignty and the tribal issues and trying to see if there would be a way to work out the tribal concerns for the North Coast region so that those would not be a contentious one and, and take us down the path of, you know, federal concerns. So again, no final decision was made on that, but I, but I do think both bodies were very, were sincerely interested in the local work and the local time that had gone into the deliberations and the volunteer efforts that came from the local level. So I was very impressed that Sacramento was truly listening to the local entities in both cases. And both of those documents are under advisement by those bodies. Supervisor Hamburg.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, this was the Blue Ribbon Task Force and the commission?
Presenting to the Fish and Game Commission.
Okay, so it was the, the task force presenting to the commission?
And, and the.
And the public.
And the public.
Also presenting to the commission.
Absolutely, yes. The bulk of the day was truly the public comment.
And, and when you mentioned no, I think you mentioned no alternative?
Yes.
Is that option zero?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so option, option zero is sort of the, the one that goes beyond the Unified Array. Okay? So these are the, these are the folks who, who don't agree that the Unified Array should be approved by the Fish and Game Commission, but really believe we should go back to before this whole process started. That's why it's option zero.
Right.
None of the above.
Right.
Yeah. So just, just so everybody is on board with that. Yeah, so just, just so everybody is on board with that, 'cause it's, when you say option zero, it's a little confusing. So that's interesting that you, you think the Fish and Game Commission is, is paying attention.
Well, I, I would say that the majority opinion there was certainly for the Unified Array, and there was unified support for the Unified Array. There were significant tribal leaders there, tribal attorneys, a variety of environmental groups, a number of fishing groups, both recreational and commercial. But because of the long and difficult time span and work that went into the Unified Array, I'd say that that was, that was really the, the majority opinion, if you will, at being presented to the commission for their consideration. But I, I thought it was important to point out that there were a number of very well-spoken individuals that supported, as you're calling it, the alternative zero, the no...
Option zero.
Yes, option zero. And you have, you know, sent out some information in terms of what the concepts of that via, you know, email messages, and, and that message was very articulately and very well, I think, covered by Mendocino County residents that attended, so I wanted to make sure that was part of the record.
Okay, I said two, two other questions. Did Assemblyman Chesbrough or Senator Evans weigh in?
Yes, they did, they both did.
And what, what was the gist of their recommendations?
Their comments were first thing in the morning, and I had not arrived. They made very brief comments initially and then departed. So they were not there for, they had representatives there, but they were not there for the, the entire day. It was a very long day. It started at, you know, first thing in the morning, and it went till after five.
It is interesting to me that both Assemblyman Chesbrough and Senator Evans are giving credence to option zero, in addition to giving credence to the, the so-called Unified Array or Preferred Option. And the other, the other question I had was whether Jim Martin and Janine Pfeiffer testified.
Yes, I sat with Jim for a while. Both of them did, yes, they absolutely did, and I heard both of their testimonies. I think they both did an excellent job. And, and from the entire region, Del Norte County, Humboldt, and Mendocino, very, very well represented. And in fact, they had to start shrinking the comment time because they wanted this meeting to conclude by five or five-thirty, so they were shortening the comment period from the three minutes down to two, down to one. So it was unfortunate. The later speakers really didn't get a lot of time to weigh in, and very articulate messages. National Resource Defense Council was there. I mean, it was, it was a very well, and, and just articulate commentary from a variety of perspectives. And yes, I, I, I believe your sentiments are accurate, that both Norine Evans and Wesley Chesbrough are listening to the diversity of their constituents. They, I attended also, of course, the hearing that they asked me to be present at in Eureka, which was the Joint Fisheries and Aquaculture Committee Hearing prior to this, so that information could also be put into the record. And they supported that, they're both members of that committee. So I think they're doing a very good job with the diversity of perspectives that, that are in their district, but I think the majority direction is that the Unified Array will be the, is the preferred option, and we'll probably, they're getting the, asking the commission to go forward with that, and there may be some adjustments on the tribal, seeing how that the tribal issues can be addressed within the context of the direction of the commission.
It's gonna be very interesting to see whether the commission will go along with that alternative.
And that's what was very interesting, because the commission members were largely silent, with the exception of one, for the majority of the day. And again, I had to depart and go to the Board of Forestry for a good section of the afternoon. But they were very, they seemed to be knowledgeable and supportive of, and were engaging on the tribal concerns at the end of the day, and I, I found that, I found that very interesting, and, and was encouraged by their attention to, to the details of the issues and, and that they were directing staff to bring forward, you know, other issues for their consideration relative to the process. So, I think it was, I think it was excellent.
One, one final thing. Are Janine, Janine, it is Janine Pfeiffer, not Janine Nadel. Janine, Janine and Jim, Janine Pfeiffer and Jim Martin, are they still working for us?
Well, they're, they're definitely engaged as community individuals in the process. I believe the small amount of grant funding that they received through our grant application has expired.
Okay.
And the CEO is saying, yes.
So they're, they're private citizens at this point?
Yeah, yeah. The only final other report I have for this morning is, there is a very good facilitated process going on on the Mendocino Coast. It's, it's called the Coast Animal Shelter Committee. It's being facilitated by an outside facilitator, and it is an excellent process, and the first meeting was last week that I attended and Supervisor Hamburg attended. The city of Fort Bragg is very, very involved. The Thelma Doleger Commitment, that's a trust fund for animals, is, is also very interested in the process, and it's trying to come up with an alternative for the Mendocino Coast for animal care responsibility, something that would go beyond what just currently the city of Fort Bragg has for its residents. And it is a committed and ongoing process. There'll be another meeting this week. And I think its collaborative vision with all the disparate players is, is a major challenge, and this is, I'm sure all board members know, this, the concern for the animals on the coast and the sheltering capabilities and the county's lack of being able to maintain two shelters has been a very difficult issue for coastal residents. But this process may take us to a new place, and I, I'm holding out a great hope for its ability to move the issue forward for the coastal residents, and I think it was, it is a very, very good process. It's been a long-incoming to get this in place, to have the resources placed, and to have the, the basic entities that are involved make some basic commitments to participate, but it is happening, and the public is engaged and involved, and it's, it's a very good process. Supervisor Hamburg, have any additional comments in that?
No, I just agree with everything you said.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. We're almost to our ten o'clock item. We do have one additional public comment. Louis Bigfoot will take that now, it's a few minutes before ten.
Louis, thank you. Thank you for your reports. I take them serious, all the supervisor's reports. I don't make comments 'cause it's a long walk, and, but anyway, again, on the money being spent on the caring of the mental health patients, it goes over a million dollars. It's not three hundred and thirty-seven, that's just for this one go-around, but it's well over a million. And part of that is transportation, so, you know, just moving people around costs a huge amount of money. We need to put out a shingle that says "Wanted," you know, a facility in Ukiah or someplace in the county to help Stacy Cryer and help, because if a person has a problem with, if there is a problem, they have to drive all the way to Redding to visit somebody, that's the other side of the coin. Okay. The thing I really, the other thing I want to talk about is Jackson State Forest, 'cause two weeks ago, they were meeting, while the Board of Supervisors were meeting, the Jackson State Forest were having their, their meeting in the back room over here, and I just happened to stumble on the meeting. I didn't even know what was going on, and I thought, it was like this disconnect, because I, I thought that the information that was being discussed at this meeting, which I only was able to catch about ten minutes of, and I caught the final wrap-up, should have been before the public here at the Board of Supervisors. So what I'm asking is, I would like to have the JAG and Jackson State Forest come to Mendocino County and talk to the public, and let them know this issue of, of the transformation from clear-cutting to single-tree selection, and that's part of what was being discussed at this meeting, was the impact on the forest and the impact on the pocketbook of trying to make that transformation, the number of board feet. And all the people that were in the room were talking about it, and how that information is being looked upon. And what alarmed me was that the, the, part of the conversation said, "Well, you know, I just got the information last night, and I haven't had a time to, you know, put it all on the graph and get it all together," and yet they had their meeting here. So I would appreciate it if somehow they would come here, and as part of that process, if they could bring the map of Jackson State Forest that has the color coding showing the various age class of trees that exist in Jackson State Forest, when the map was put together, you know, 'cause I was alarmed at the map, in the sense that the clarity of the map didn't tell me what I needed to know, because of the color coding was a little fuzzy. I don't want to go any further. Got, great, thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I also wanted to go back to Jackson State Forest and the management plan, and I did read it with a lot of interest, learned new terminology. It was a difficult two-and-a-half-year process of this committee that met. I believe you were on the committee, Supervisor Smith? No, you weren't on the JAG.
I'm on.
Oh, okay. But most significant and, and interesting to me were the issues surrounding even-age management of the forest and the JAG agreement to support that particular, those particular areas for research and demonstration only, and the goals of the management plan. No one goal was pursued that was a deterrent to others, and the multi-goals were respected by all through the process and at the end. And I believe it received full consensus, or nearly full consensus, at least a strong consensus, by everybody that served on the JAG, and that has come a long way than where we were many, many years ago. So the report is out. Louis, you might want to read it, yeah, and it's very good.
I can...
Supervisor Smith has a copy.
I believe you can get it, the report from the, the Board of Forestry website or from the, the Board of Forestry's agenda for that day, I believe, has the report in, in all, in detail. And if that doesn't work, I can certainly figure out another way for you to get a copy, but I believe it is...
It's electronic.
It's there, it's available. To Supervisor Brown's comments, thank you for taking the time to delve into it and read it, and it was great to hear the local commentary. We had local, Mendocino County had a number of folks that spoke, both committee members and just public citizens, to the Board of Forestry, and they, I'm gonna ask that they do come when it's timely and do a presentation for the Board of Supervisors, a brief one.
I can be appropriate.
And on the content, and I think, I think that that, it's working its way through the process of, for the adoption, I believe, through the Board of Forestry, so I'm in touch with, with them, and will ask that they come. I believe city of Fort Bragg also wants a presentation, so we could link it, so it could be a two-day, you know, Fort Bragg, and then the Board of Supervisors, that would be probably useful. So one that's timely, and I think that's coming up in the next maybe six weeks or so, we'll, we'll certainly ask, I'm gonna ask for a presentation. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, Jackson State Forest is in Mendocino County. I find ironic, certainly there's a hard copy of this report someplace, shouldn't it be in Mendocino County?
It's right here. You had a, you got to review it.
Well, yeah, but we wish, the public was just told that they would have to go to the website to get it, but we do have a copy, right?
We do, we do have a copy.
It is available.
Yeah, it is available. Okay, let's move on to our timed item for ten o'clock. Report to the Board of Supervisors of the Status of the Family Planning Program at Mendocino County Health and Human Services Agency, Community Health Services. Ms. Cryer?
Thank you. My name is Stacy Cryer, and I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. Before I start on my presentation today, I wanted to say thank you for the resolution you passed this morning. It's important to both the agency and Patty, so we both appreciate that you read that and moved that forward, so I wanted to say thank you. This morning you asked me to come and talk to you a little bit about family planning services. We have been at the agency looking towards elimination of direct services provided through our family planning program, and we are going to be asking for a beelinsen hearing on that process, and it is on your consent to set a date for that beelinsen. And so at the last meeting that I attended, you asked me to come before you and talk a little bit about what's going on in family planning, what process we've used to come to this decision. At that time, I invited my agency, the Health and Human Services Agency Advisory Board, to present with me, and before, beside me today is Patty Bruder, and she is the Chair of the Agency Advisory Board. They've been involved in the process, and I thought it would be beneficial for you to hear from not just me, but from them as well. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the program itself, the funding and the plans for the future of this program. Patty will talk a little bit about the process that we used, how we came to this recommendation, the services that exist on the coast currently, the role of the Agency Advisory Board, and how this all ties together into the future of healthcare, not just for the state, but for the nation as well. So, we've just put together some brief talking points, and we'll be happy to answer any questions when we're done. As we all know, we've got declining revenues everywhere, state, federal, local dollars. Our realignment dollars, which fund a portion of family planning, are down twenty percent for public health in our, in our county. Then that's twenty percent since fiscal year oh-seven, oh-eight. I think the agency has done a really good job prior to me and continuing with me, and being proactive and looking forward to the future about what's coming as far as funding reductions and what we can do to start to prepare for that. It's my belief, and it was belief of the administration before me, that if we plan for what's coming, we have a lot, a much better process, and we can transition things, and it'll be a much smoother process, rather than being in a position of having to react to a funding cut and services being eliminated quickly or reduced quickly. So we're always looking towards what's maybe coming and what really we can be looking We have an obligation, of course, to use our, all of our tax dollars, whether they be local, federal, or state tax dollars, in the most efficient way possible. And we're always looking at our mandated services, what those are, and how can we ensure that those mandated services and obligations get continued. So, you know, for the last three years, we've been looking at the drop in realignment, we've been looking at the potential decrease or elimination of family PAC dollars, we've been looking at decreases in state funding, we've been looking at decreases in federal dollars, and began to look three or four years ago about what, what services are mandated and what services are not. In public health, as you know, three years ago, I believe it was, we closed the Public Health Lab and entered into an agreement with the Sonoma County Public Health Lab to offer those services. The other services that we identified for us to look at further were immunization services, family planning services, and latent TB services. So the one we're talking about today is family planning. Family planning program has been in existence in Mendocino County through the county Public Health Department since nineteen seventy-one. One thing I do want to make sure is really clear here today is that anything we're talking about as far as elimination is no reflection on the services that were provided out of the family planning clinic. They're stellar services, they've been great services, the staff are very hard-working, very loyal, very dedicated, and very passionate about these services. The clients that receive the services at Mendocino County, we get very good satisfaction survey reports, they believe the services are good. Some of the clients we've had have been coming there for years. So no way is this a reflection on the services that were provided or any judgment about the job that was being done there. So I want to make sure that that's really clear. In two thousand and nine, the family planning clinic out of Mendocino County Public Health served approximately twenty-five-hundred clients, which was about fifty-two-hundred visits. The mandate that we have in public health through Health and Safety Code is to provide STD surveillance and investigation. We also have an obligation to do certain morbidity reports that go to the state. So those are obligations and mandates that we would need to continue. The services that we're talking about eliminating are the direct services that we provide through the clinic, the annual exams, the STD testing, family planning services, those types of things, the, the direct services that we provide. And we do not have a mandate to provide those, nor do we have, we don't, we're not talking here about contracting services out. We don't have to hand these services over to a contractor. We do have an obligation through the beelinsen process to ensure that services are available, especially to low-income residents. And Patty will talk a little bit more during her, her few minutes about really where these services are available elsewhere in the community and how these services can be, be obtained. I want to also acknowledge that this is a very, this particular program, I think, more than, than many of the others that we talk about, because unfortunately, I, I have to stand before you more than I would like to and talk about reduction of services. And this particular program, I think, is maybe more emotional than any of the other ones, and the reason is, is because of the relationship that is built between the patient and the provider, and it's a very unique relationship. There are a lot of times where, even though you can get family planning services through your primary care physician, you may choose not to. You may want a separate physician for these types of services, and it, and you do build a relationship, and it's a trusting relationship. So for that particular reason, I think, there's other reasons as well, but I think this makes it a more emotional program when we talk about the reduction or elimination of these services. And I, I do want to say I realize that it's not easy... And I, I do want to say I realize that it's not easy. This is not an easy elimination for anyone. I want to remind you that we're talking about elimination of services in Ukiah and Willets. That's where we currently have family planning service clinics. We had clinic services in Fort Bragg, and those were closed in 2005. And Patty's going to talk a little bit about really how that went and what some of the opportunities that arose out of that. I also know that there's some, some members in the audience that will probably speak to that as well, as far as how things are going on the coast. So I just want to remind you, when we're talking about this, it's just Willets and Ukiah. I also want to remind us that the services being eliminated or reduced is not unique in our county. Many of our neighboring counties and counties throughout the state have begun to reduce or eliminate and providing direct services through family planning. They've also begun to reduce services regarding immunizations and other issues. We do not have, through our public health department in Mendocino County, a clinic associated. Some, some counties actually have an FQHC, a federally qualified healthcare center tied to their county services, and they can provide primary care services and other services along with family planning. All we do is family planning services in that clinic. We don't provide primary care at all. I'm going to let Patty talk a little bit about some of the processes and what we did. And then I'd like to follow up and end with really what services we are going to continue in, in the family planning arena and what our plans for the future are. So Patty Bruder.
Okay. So hi, I'm Patty Bruder, the Chair of the HSSA Health and Human Service Advisory Committee. And we are a committee that is made up of many community members, and we have representatives from each of the districts as well. So it's, it's really a, sort of a high-powered committee. It's, it's made up of a lot of people with a lot of information about the county. And so it's been a good group to look at how can we do these services differently. And we really did begin, like Stacy said, looking at family planning based on where we are in our economy and the financial crisis, and not because of how the services are being delivered. And we do really, really want to stress that the staff has been fantastic and has delivered quality services. So we began to look at family planning, and, and we've talked about it for several years now, looking at different ways that that might happen, and, you know, looking at direct services, and would direct services the county should or could still provide. And in those discussions, we began to really look at what other ways are there to deliver services? And because the county provides services in Ukiah and Willets, we really began also some detailed discussions with the Mendocino Community Health Clinic, because they are the ones that currently provide services in both Willets and Ukiah. And what we began to find is that we could develop a different service delivery, and that there are, we also looked at the Fort Bragg model and looked at what happened when the county left services in Fort Bragg, and where people served, and what were people's response to services. And we found that, you know, there was really good services still there. And we're also aware that there's community clinics all throughout the county, which is something that the county isn't able to do. And the, the clinics are located, or currently provide these services as well. So in looking at that, we found that the clinics often have teen clinics, and they really tune into the needs of the teens as well, because that was one of the areas that we had a lot of concern about. Although we found that the level of teens served at the county wasn't as high as we thought, but we know that there's issues with teens sometimes coming to family providers and not wanting to go there for service, and so that was a concern. And so in looking at how we could redo this system, we're also quite aware that medical managed care is coming to the county. And we started to realize that if family planning services were also connected to the clinics and private providers, there could be a true medical home for people, and they wouldn't be coming for their family planning services at one place and the rest of their care at another place. And we saw that as a real positive, that we thought that might really strengthen services. So having that medical home was really important. We also see a need for public education and outreach and prevention. And one of the things that I think often happens with us as service providers is that's the piece that kind of gets left behind, because you're so busy doing services that you don't do as much work as you could with prevention. And so we also feel like it would be really important for the county to maintain that piece and, and do outreach, education, and prevention. And that could help make a more seamless system, and especially when you realize that people have relationships with their care providers, and we realize that that's really important, and it will be a very difficult transition for people that have been going to the county for years. So, so we also looked at, you know, what might happen to the current staff. And this is kind of one of those situations where current staff, there probably is places for them in the existing system. Their jobs may change, but it doesn't seem like it's really a, one of those times where the staff would just be laid off. So there may be other options for them, and we felt really good about that as well. Of course, that would all have to be looked at, but, so it seems like this is kind of one of those situations where the system has the potential of becoming a much stronger system and partnering with the county. And so we feel like the outcome for this particular program is, has a lot better future than what it could have. And we think that that's a really positive thing. And so I also just wanted to, to sort of end with reminding you that there is this committee, this advisory committee that we have, and it's full of people that are really interested and available to help figure out how do we transition from a silo sort of based health system to a more comprehensive, community-wide system and try to strengthen it. And so I just wanted to remind you of that fact.
Thanks, Patty. I wanted to give just a little bit more specifics on the process. They had begun talking about family planning before I got here, which was in 2007. And when I took it to the agency, which was then the Public Health Advisory Board, we developed a task force on this particular issue and met with the Director of Nursing and some members of the family planning staff, I think it was the, the Division Manager at the time, and some members from the Advisory Board. And we did things like developed a survey that we sent out. We began to talk to local providers about their capacity. We did talk to the clinics, as Patty talked about. So this isn't a decision we made overnight. And again, it's my belief that if we can make these decisions in the, with a little more time to prepare, that we can come up with a better outcome than if we just wait for family PAC dollars to go away and have to make a decision in 30 days. So we've been working on this for years. This isn't a new decision. It's really something that we've been working on for years. There's about $240,000, give or take a little, of realignment dollars that go into family planning. The rest of the funding comes from, you know, they are able to bill, they get family PAC dollars, they get some federal dollars, they get Title 10 dollars. So there's about $240,000 worth of realignment that goes into this. And really, it's about, for me, making the best use of those few realignment dollars that we get. And how do I, how can I impact the most, the largest component of our population with those few dollars? And three years ago, we developed a prevention unit. We got some money from California Endowment to develop this prevention unit. And we combined alcohol and drug prevention with tobacco prevention, chronic disease prevention. And some of the work that you supported today through that resolution came partly in support with that unit. So it's been a good unit. And you can take your few realignment dollars, instead of providing direct service to 2,500 clients, you can take those few realignment dollars, put them into a couple of prevention staff, and get prevention activities and education and outreach to the larger component of your community. You can be out in more high schools, you can be out in the public, you can be getting public announcements out, and you can get to a closer, a larger percent of, of our population than you can through providing direct services. So a lot of it's about, not so much, you know, how much money are we going to save, but how can we use the money we have the wisest way possible to get to the highest number of people that we can? Because the last thing that any one of us sitting here wants to see is an increase in teen pregnancy rates or, or any of that. So we need to continue to advocate for, for family planning services and to get information out there. And it's our intent to use those realignment dollars in that way. So we're going to continue, because it's our mandate, as I stated, to do STD and surveillance, investigation and surveillance. We'll continue to do the morbidity report. We will continue to work, we spend some time on HIV, and we'll continue to do that. And then we'll take some of those realignment dollars and continue to, to work on prevention activities. So it's not our thought that we're not going to do anything in family planning. Again, it's about taking those few dollars we have and using them the wisest way possible. And we've been talking about it for a long time. No matter how much we talk about it, I can tell you that it, it's just not easy. The, the staff is not happy. I've got clients that are, are not happy. We're, we're going to hear that people are, are not happy. And again, it's not an easy shift. It's a very personal relationship, and it will be difficult. And ultimately, you know, we'll come forward with the bailance and hearing if you set a date today. And we'll give some more specifics then about the number of staff that will be impacted, the contractors that are impacted, and more specifics on, you know, exactly where services can be, can be received. So with that, I think I'll end it and let you ask us questions. And I do know there's public that wants to comment.
Okay, we'll go to Supervisor Pinches.
Kind of specific to my area, you said these services won't be provided in the Willets area, but they'll be kind of picked up through the health clinics, right? But does that include like the Leightonville Health Clinic where there's not services? So they would have.
There's, there's a, there's a federally qualified health center in Willets, and there's a federally qualified health center in Leightonville that can provide those services. There's.
You know, you say they can, but, but will they?
Yes, they, they currently do.
They will do.
There was approximately 2,500 clients that got services in our family planning clinic. And over the same time period, so that was about 5,100 visits that came through our clinic. The same time period, there was over 16,000 visits at the, for low-cost clients that were received through the FQHCs and rural health centers. So we did about 5,000, they did about 16,000. So my point of that is they're already providing the services. This will not be a new service for any of those.
Like I say, so the real issue is here is, like you say, that the fact that maybe some of these people might have to change locations or change the doctor they see or whatever, that's going to be the real issue.
That's, that is one of the real issues.
But it's not really about the service will, will be able, available out there.
There will be some concern raised about the capacity, because this is 2,500 new clients in the Ukiah and Willets area, mostly in Ukiah, that will be entering the system. So capacity will have to be addressed. And I think that there's probably someone in the audience today from at least one of the providers that can address how they're planning on increasing their capacity to handle those clients. There will be 2,500 new clients entering the system. And so it's not about a new, it's, it's about a new provider, but also about having an increased capacity in the existing providers to handle those new clients.
I just want to say one thing. I think our health clinics are the greatest things that's happened in Mendocino County in this last century. I really do. I, I was born and raised in Leightonville, when if you got sick, somebody would haul you in their car, you would to Willets, there was nothing. Now we have a health center that's, some people might call it just a small hospital. I mean, it's, it's really fantastic, and it's really great.
Hickory. Supervisor McCown.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I've worked with youth throughout my adult life and enjoyed really that work. But I do have concerns with the transition, mainly for teenagers, you know, young adults, teenagers, community college students, also homeless youth. And you, you talked about outreach. I think that is going to be a very strong component. And you did talk about these teen centers that the health centers have, I believe. That is a connection. So, you know, I would like to hear that addressed, and I, I'm kind of aware, we have speakers, I see some familiar faces out in the audience, and maybe they can answer those questions about what they do have, and is it only federally funded health centers that can provide this? Or, or all the health centers through Arch or whatever, partnering up to make sure that all communities are served? So those are some of the concerns that I have.
Can I respond just briefly?
Sure. Go ahead. You know, one of the things that we did was we, you know, because it's, it's a multitude of services that are provided through family planning in the county. And so one of the things we did was looked at all the services and tried to identify where maybe some of the gaps were. For example, there's a cancer detection program that currently was provided on the coast by someone else, but was done through our family planning clinic inland. So one thing that we did not want to discontinue was providing that service, and we began to engage in conversations with a community partner on whether or not they could pick that service up. And so we are looking at where the gaps might be. I'm going to let, Paula Cohen is in the audience, and she's from the clinic in Fort Bragg. And when services and family planning were discontinued in Fort Bragg, they opened up a teen clinic for, for that reason that you're talking about, Supervisor Brown. And we've also talked to the clinic here locally in Ukiah on whether or not that would be something that they could replicate. And they've expressed an interest in replicating that. So I think that there is someone from the, the Ukiah clinic here today as well to speak. So you're right, and perhaps the speakers may be the best to address it. But we did, again, we've been looking at this for years, and it's been a large group of people looking at this. And, and again, it's not easy, but we have tried to identify every service and where the gaps might be, because we don't want to see increases in, in teen pregnancy or unexpected pregnancies at all. So we have tried to identify those services and where they're needed.
I think the speakers that will come forward will help clarify some of this. Would you like to speak first, Supervisor McCown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions. You said that most of the present employees would have other options. Would that be options with the county or options with the clinics or other providers?
Actually, they'll have both. The clinic has expressed an interest in picking up, to build their capacity, to picking up some of the providers that provide services currently through the county. So I believe they'll have opportunities there. Also, we've held positions vacant in public health. There are actually many, many vacant positions within our field nursing unit, and they'll have opportunities there as well. We've held them vacant because of funding issues and because we knew that we were moving down this path and wanted to keep those positions vacant for some of those staff. So, and additionally, if we continue, we are continuing with the prevention services, so there will need to be some staff that, that move over into prevention to continue the prevention aspect of family planning. So I think they'll have a multitude of opportunities. I don't think that makes it easier for the staff, you know, for them to move over to the clinic. They lose retirement that they've, you know, put into for years in the county, so I don't think that would be an easy shift. So again, none of this is easy, but there will be opportunities.
Thank you. And I have the same concern as Supervisor Brown, that teens are going to be reluctant to go to the same place their family is getting medical services. So if their family's already being served by the clinic, you know, I see there could be a barrier to them wanting to go there. So I, I think we're going to hear more about that in a minute. One other concern, the county is often the provider of last resort. So are there going to be people that are going to fall through the cracks, that are not going to be able to access the clinics or private providers? And what plans, if any, are we making for them?
All of the clients that receive services through the county are eligible to obtain services through the clinics. There's, there's no differentiation there. They, the clinics have a sliding fee scale. They have the same ability to, to treat those patients as we do. So in that regard, there are no, there are no class of clientele that could not obtain services somewhere. The, the question will be, do they want to obtain services somewhere? I think you bring up a valid point. Some people won't want to go, you know, where their mom goes to get services. There will be those issues. And one of the things I'll look up when Paula is talking is how many teenagers we actually served. I have it broken down by age here, so I'll look up that information. So, so you have that, why Paula's talking.
Well, just to follow up a little, I, you know, I have the perception that there's some people out there in the community that, that don't have a lot of resources, and yet for one reason or another, they don't qualify for, you know, medical or, or other programs. And so are those folks still going to be able to get served at the clinics, even though the clinic may not be getting reimbursed?
Yes, and I'm going to let either Paula or Kathy answer that question, because they can do such a better job than I can.
Thank you.
But yes, they can. And Supervisor McCown, there is also another option that I'll address after we hear from the speakers. So Paula Cohen from Mendocino Coast Clinics Incorporated.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am Paula Cohen. I'm the Executive Director of the Mendocino Coast Clinics and have been since 1994. I was part of the team that had come to the Board of Supervisors and went through a bailance and healing hearing to transfer the operations of the, the Coast Clinic, as it was called, at that time. at that time, to a private, not-for-profit community health center. And just to kind of toot our little horn, we went from 2,200 individual patients back in 1994 and 6,500 visits to just having completed 43,000 visits to over 9,000 people. So you can see that, that the programs are and do exist and continue to grow outside of, outside of the county purview. As having been related and involved in this since 1994, I've, I've worked with the county staff and just need to reiterate everything everybody's saying. They've been providing very good quality services. People have appreciated it and they do have high satisfaction marks. However, that's not the issue at this point. And, you know, difficult choices are forced upon us during difficult times. And Stacy, I have to give her kudos for the amount of time and effort she has put into this, trying to balance the needs, the priorities, the preferences of people, and in light of an abysmal financial picture. We have been providing family planning services since 1994. Our teen clinic just celebrated its first anniversary last Friday. And I will tell you, that has been a resounding success. And one of the reasons it has been is we have used an AmeriCorps worker to go into the high school and middle school now, talking about healthy relationships, not just family planning, kind of delving into a whole lot of other issues. The teens have a special time. We have a special clinic on Thursday afternoons, just for those who don't feel comfortable coming in. And I will tell you, they come into that the first time. And later visits, they just come into our regular session. We have a special text line and there have been over 2,000 texts in the last year. So obviously, there's, there's interest and the teens are getting what they need. The teens are eligible for Family Pact, which is a program that does provide the services. So in answer to your question, no teen nor any woman will ever go without having access to family planning services. If they cannot afford them, they are made available. We, we utilize any kind of funding stream we can. It is our mission to make sure that people have the services they need and have prevention and wellness service. I don't want people being pregnant if they don't want to be. And I don't want them having sexually transmitted infections that they should not be having. Let's see. In recognition of, of the situation we're in at this point in time, my personal opinion is that the county is responsible for providing services, that they have the best expertise to provide and are not available other places in the community. In order to not duplicate services and to use the resources that are, are available and to use them wisely makes much sense. I mean, it's what I do when I budget. If I can't provide this, if no one else can provide this service, I will. If someone else can provide a service, we try to partner with that organization that will do that. So in my conclusion, because I'm already out of time, basically, you do have a cadre of health centers and private providers. On Mendocino Coast, there are about three other providers that are also providing family planning services through the state-only family planning program, which is called Family Pact. And so there are other resources out there. At this point in time, we serve over 1,100 individual people, males as well as females. And we did 2,300 services last year just in the, for family planning needs. So I welcome any questions.
Any questions from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Pinches, about talking about Leightonville because it's, it is a very good clinic.
I think you've helped answer a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Anyone else that would like to comment? We do have one speaker form from earlier, Val Mohasky.
Hi, I'm Val Mohasky. I live in Philo and I'm the President of the National Women's Political Caucus. And we are opposed to eliminating the family planning on the county level. I was quite struck with Supervisor Hamburg's description of women's history and family planning. It's a long, long story. And it goes back to the twenties, thirties, and forties when women who sent information about family planning through the males were arrested and put in federal prisons. It has been just since the seventies that family planning has been recognized by, endorsed by this county. And in the seventies, Biba Frey, who was the first, your very first family planning doctor, provided the services here in the 1970s and eighties and set up the program that has become quite an exemplary program. What we want to do is see that that focus continues on the county level. It's interesting that we say, well, we'll put them off and we'll do it on a level of the clinics. But at this very moment, the clinic funding is seriously cut on the federal level. An email from our Congressman Mike Thompson said family, that the community health clinics would be seriously cut under this federal budget. It's also probably, there probably is, is cuts coming up from the state level, too. So you have 11 county clinics and they're in precarious positions. I understand that they would welcome money from the county to provide these services. But as John said, are they going to provide them to everybody? Are there going to be people in Hopland and people in remote rural areas that are going to have these services? So we would ask you to retain family planning services on the county level to keep a focus. And I'll tell you a little story about family planning. They came to my continuation high school in Booneville and gave us lessons on sex education and disease prevention. And that's the kind of outreach that having a focused county group can do. So I would ask you to retain this county planning services on the county level and to keep them. I also have a very interesting thing about public health that was done by the American Association of University Women. And this is Joan Borecki, who was the Dean of Nursing down in Santa Rosa Junior College. She took a look at what you have done to, to public health. And if you keep on doing it, you might take the word "public" out of "health" and just say "health" because you have eliminated so many of your nurses and people that did direct services to clients. So I would ask you to take a look at this. It's quite interesting.
Thank you very much, Val. Any other speakers? Oh, Supervisor Pinches, you had a comment.
When I heard that the health clinics were going to, in this new budget, get cut a billion dollars overall, I followed up on that. And actually, that is true. But if, but what happened was, is in the stimulus package, the health clinics was a billion dollars in there. So in the continuing resolution, they took the billion dollars back. So the net impact to the health clinics is, is, is no, no decrease. I followed up on that because that really scared me when I found out about that. So, but you're going to hear a lot of, a lot of probably on the anti-budget cut side saying, well, they're cutting the health clinics a billion dollars. That's really not true. It'll balance out to zero because the money was in the stimulus package. Anyways, I just wanted to confirm that.
Supervisor Hamburg?
But thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. But it's also true that the new Republican majority wants to destroy family planning and wants to do everything possible to deny abortion services to women throughout the country. So if we're counting on the feds for the future of family planning services, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm listening to everything Stacy says and Patty, what you're saying, and, and certainly Paula and Susan Hunt and Lynn Hunter and all the, all the people. And, you know, they're, they're much more expert than I am. But, but when I turn on my TV, what I see is Republicans talking about slashing family planning. It's one, definitely one of the things they're after. And also, just, just quickly to follow up, something Val was talking about, I've been carrying around this letter for a month that I got from a woman named Melissa Woltie in Willets. And she talks a lot in this letter about the, the positive aspects of Mendocino County family planning and, you know, how many teen pregnancies we prevent and the overwhelming percentage of the women, especially young women and teens, teenage women, who 90% of the pregnant, of the teens in this county who become pregnant qualify for public assistance. Let me, let me say that, let me make sure I get this right. Over 90% of the clients to the, to Mendocino County family planning would qualify for public assistance if they became pregnant. So, you know, you start to look at penny wise and pound foolish here in terms of expenditure of public dollars. But the thing that, that Val said that, that really struck me was the things outside of, you know, the STD testing and the, the family planning counseling and all these other things that are provided in a family planning setting, whether it's the county or whether it's one of our clinics. And she talks about some of the things that we've been doing through family planning. She says, "I have not discussed the educational role, the pregnancy and STD prevention presentations given by family planning staff in classrooms throughout the county and many community organizations like the Ford Street Project, AODP, and Juvenile Hall. I have not discussed the referral networks with social services and other agencies like Project Sanctuary for child abuse or domestic violence issues. I have not discussed the extensive follow-up and case management for positive STDs or positive cancer screening tests. I have not discussed the community trust that comes from providing high-quality service for 40 years or a multitude of other aspects of a quiet, well-run program that has contributed greatly to the health and welfare of Mendocino County." So there's been a lot to this program over the years. And, you know, if, if in fact, we do call for this bilance and hearing and end up getting rid of this program, you know, I, I for one, you know, no matter how rosy our projections are for how we're going to replace it, it's going to be very difficult to, to replace it.
Okay. Ms. Cryer, you wanted to make a comment?
I have just a couple of comments. I, I do, I agree with you, Supervisor Hamburg, that it is going to be very challenging. And Melissa Woltie is the Program Manager for Family Planning and she's very dedicated to the program. She makes some valid points. I do want to caution us, if we're concerned about the decline in federal dollars for family planning, that will impact greatly the services that are provided through the county as we count on those federal dollars. There is currently no state general, or no county general fund that goes into family planning. So if the federal dollars declined or the state, state budget declined worse than it is right now, we would be coming to looking for county general fund to support that clinic. So that's a concern that we have to be aware of. And as far as the outreach hours go, I agree. The outreach and education done in Booneville and some of the other classrooms is great. In 2009, we did 145 hours. If I have dedicated staff doing nothing but outreach, education, and engagement because that's our focus now, think of what we could do then. I mean, if the, if the outreach we're doing now is great, what can we do then? So I, I think that we have to, I mean, if we have to make these tough decisions, we have to use those dollars to really look at what we can do to impact a higher population. And I just wanted to get back to John quickly, that there were 238 clients in the clinic. Out of the 2,500 clients that I mentioned, there was 238 that were under the age of 18. So that's the number of teens we're talking about. So I just wanted to follow up with those things.
Okay, let's continue to, with public comment. Please come forward, state your name.
I'll be really brief. This is, I'm Kathy Frye with the Alliance for Rural Community Health. But I'm also a member of the Health and Human Service Agency Board. Supervisor Brown, to your concern about teen clinics, there are also teen clinics in Wallala and in Anderson Valley. And I believe Leightonville also has a teen clinic. I won't speak to what's happening here in Ukiah, but throughout the county, there are opportunities for teens to actually get very, very private family planning services. And those aren't held at the clinic. They're usually held in an off-site space. So that a child, a young person, male or female, doesn't have to walk in and see their next-door neighbor in the, in the health center waiting room. Yes, federal funding is, is a challenge. Supervisor Pinches, you absolutely were correct in what's happening. I would echo what Stacy is saying, though. The Republicans in Congress are really looking to eliminate Title X funding. Your family planning program relies on over $100,000 worth of Title X funding. Title X funding also helps fund some of the state's Family Pact program. And if that goes away, the Family Pact program goes away. I will tell you, if those two programs go away, the mandate of the community health centers to continue providing family planning services does not go away. Our mandate is to provide services irrespective of ability to pay. I would also say that I would imagine you would see a rally of community providers throughout the county, not just the community health centers, but private providers, our rural health clinics coming together. And we are coming together to discuss more than just family planning, but also to talk about healthcare in, in general. And finally, Supervisor Hamburg, there are five very, very strong women who run these community health centers here in Mendocino County. All of them are absolute advocates and staunch, staunch would be out there with who knows what if family planning services were ever, they weren't able to provide those. So just know they're, they're a great group of women who aren't ever going to put women in jeopardy. I can guarantee you that. So, thank you.
Please come forward.
Hello. My name is Jill Damian. I'm the Program Manager at Mendocino Community Health Clinic for Ukiah, Willets, and Lakeport. I've been in the role for the last five years. And prior to that, I was the Executive Director of the Potter Valley Community Health Center. So I think I can address some of your concerns about the little towns in the county and also what's happening in Ukiah and Willets. Currently, in our program, we provide full-scope gynological care, family planning services at low cost. We've mentioned before, we have the same programs with Family Pact. We're held to the same confidentiality rules and we provide those services to everyone in the community. And I had some things that I wanted to say, but I think it'd be more helpful for you to respond to some of the questions that were brought up, specifically about capacity. In Ukiah and Willets, we have two projects going on. One in Ukiah, we're actually being inspected today. We have a brand-new wing for our Women's Health Center, which raises our capacity from six exam rooms to 12. So that means we have more space to hire more providers, to see more people. In Willets, we, we recently received funding to change our health center to, for any of you that have been to the Little Lake Health Center, it's three-story. There's a bottom basement area that we're working on redesigning to just be an area for women's health. So that will also provide increased capacity and confidentiality for our clients. The teen clinic that Paula mentioned is going on in the coast. We have committed to replicating that the best that we can in Ukiah and Willets area. I think it's really, when we think about the possibility of the family planning clinic closing, I think the one positive thing that could come out of it would be the prevention unit that Stacy mentioned and the fact that we could partner with the county to provide those services. It is hard when you're providing direct service to have the staff to go out into all the places that we should be. In the last two years, we've been proactively in discussions with family planning staff. I've talked to Melissa just in the last few weeks. We're trying to identify where are the gaps, what are the concerns, how can we adjust, how can we change to meet the needs of the community. When the county closed services on Fridays, we added staff because on Fridays, all of a sudden, without any warning, we had tons of teens that wanted to get in and other women. In Willets, when staffing went down, we've added an afternoon clinic there. So I think the one thing that I just wanted to share with you is that we're, at Mendocino Community Health Clinic, we're committed to partnering however we can and providing access. And if there are gaps, then we want to address them and be there for the community because those services are very personal and we know that because we do provide them and those relationships are important. So whatever we can do to facilitate transferring patients, we want to be able to do that. Melissa Woltie, who was mentioned earlier, we've talked about how could we transition records over, how could we do things, whatever we could do to make it easier so that someone's long history of care wouldn't be lost by the program closing. Is there any other, anything else that I can share that might, that I missed that you had concerns about?
Questions from the board?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. So returning to the board, Stacy, I have a, a question or concern and I, I want to thank you for referencing and giving the board some information on the realignment, sort of conundrum with, with all of this. I think what, if, if we're going to go forward in this direction, I think what I would want to see... to see is, how can we in some way perhaps formalize this commitment to the realignment dollars for the prevention education? In other words, not just the concept that that'll happen, not just the general discussion that it will happen, but how can we actually be assured that there will be a growth in those educational options and, as the last speaker said, the firm commitment to be able to partner with the community members that are providing the direct services? So how can, how will we be, I know I may be jumping ahead a little bit, but would there be a way to not just give a nod to that, but really actually give us some form to that?
Well, as I said, I formed the prevention unit approximately three years ago, and I think two budget cycles ago, it actually became a budget unit on its own. Recently, probably in about the last, maybe six months, maybe even longer, time's getting away from me, I transferred that prevention unit that had historically reported directly to me as the public health director. I transferred that prevention unit to the director of nursing and talked to Gloria Gutfeld, and she is here today, and talked to her about the ultimate goal of folding in more prevention activities and where we wanted to go. You know, we've had a pretty limited scope in that unit to date, and we have ideas about where we want to go, and family planning is one of them. So recently, we've had conversations about each of the staff and where, and which ones possibly could go over into that activity, and you'll see it on the budget. I mean, I can commit to that. I have every commitment to moving forward with putting those realignment dollars into prevention activities, or at least a large portion of them, into prevention activities to continue those family planning things. So you'll see that coming through in the budget. I don't know, I guess I'm not sure what action I could take right now. I mean, I would be willing to sign a statement. I give you my promise that this will happen. I know that, that's just my words. But you'll see it in the budget, and we've had discussions, I've had discussions with the director of nursing, which is why I transferred that to her, so that we could have that ongoing kind of communication, and she would have a bigger kind of vision of what was happening. So, other than my commitment, I'm not sure what I could show you, but you do have my commitment that that will happen.
I didn't mean about formalizing it right now. I meant, you know, down, down the line as we go forward.
You'll see it in your budget, which we're starting, you know, we're working on now. So it'll be there.
Okay, Patty?
If I could just say that that was part of the advisory board's motion was, we were supportive of this move, but we felt really, really strongly that that piece needed to be in place, and the advisory board would do everything in their power to be able to keep that on track.
Good, thank you. My other, my other concern or other topic I'd like to bring up that I think does address or is a component to what other supervisors have referenced here, and that is, is the expression of interest by Planned Parenthood to come into Mendocino County and provide services. So I'm sort of surprised I didn't hear from either of you on that topic. I think it is one, in terms of, we're talking about a series of options, and that's what Beelinson is supposed to do, that might be the appropriate venue. But I believe that that is, to some degree, how Napa County has transitioned its services, its service delivery, and from the reports I had from you, Ms. Crier, that has been a successful transition. So I think that we need to, we need to make sure that that topic, that option, that consideration as a model is talked about as one of the options in terms of transitioning out of Mendocino County direct services, if in fact that is where we're going. And I would say probably all of these things need to be fully vetted and explored and be discussed in detail at the Beelinson hearing, and I would think that would be the appropriate place to do so.
Can I respond?
Sure.
We have had conversations, a window opened for Planned Parenthood to begin to move into other counties in the northern region, and they've, I think, recently moved into Marin, Sonoma, they have moved into Napa, and they're looking at our county, to move into our county. I've had conversations with them, the staff have had conversations with them, the director of the clinic, Carolyn Hunter, has had conversations with them, and so has Kathy Frye. So they've had conversations with plenty of people. Planned Parenthood has a large list and array of services that they have the ability to provide, and their goal is, if they are going to come into a community, they want to know one that there is a need for those services. They don't want to come into a community and be in competitions to run the clinic out of business. That's not their goal. So there are some services that they provide that I think are totally appropriate and would be wonderful. They provide prevention services. They go into junior highs and talk about how to get through puberty. I mean, how great would that be to have somebody in our junior highs doing that? They're also in a good position, if Title X continues, to receive Title X dollars. Again, you know, they're not here to put the clinics out of business, and they would want to be really careful about that. I want to just make sure we're all clear, because there was a public comment that we were giving money to the clinics. We're not giving any money to anyone. The patients can choose to go wherever they want, and Planned Parenthood would be another option for them to go to. And I think it's a business decision on the behalf of Planned Parenthood to decide whether or not to come into this community or not. I can tell you that they are looking for space in both Ukiah and Willets, and they have a lead on some appropriate space here in Ukiah. I'm not sure they've had as much success in Willets, but it's going to be a business decision on their part, and it is another, another vehicle for people to receive services, for sure. And I'm sure that if we ask, they would come speak during the Beelinson hearing.
Thank you. I just think we need to make sure all the options are out there, but to Supervisor Hamburg's comments about the federal agenda, clearly Planned Parenthood has caught up with that funding dilemma as well. So is it an appropriate time for them to come here? Is it really a good business decision or a fit for Mendocino County? I don't know the answer to that, but it is an option that's being talked about, so I think it's appropriate to have that front and center with our discussion, and certainly would be appropriate for the Beelinson hearing.
And I just, you know, I'm going to say again that, you know, there's about 80, I'm looking at the budget for family planning in front of me right now, and just rough numbers in my head. It looks like about 80% of our funding comes from federal sources of one or the other, either FPAC dollars or through Medi-Cal. So if the federal funding through Medi-Cal or any other mechanism goes away, our clinic would have to be shut down anyway.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I had this undocumented, I keep in my drawer here for the last two or three years. It was, we talked about realignment portion of the sales tax dollars that goes. The voters buy 69.1% pass Prop 42. That was on the March 5, 2002 election. And what it did, it said right on the ballot, that was, it took, Prop 42 has this voting on spending priorities that taken effect 2008. It would force $1.2 billion in public health and safety, healthcare, to pay for increased spending on transportation. We, the people of California, done that by going to the poll. You know, I mean, at that time, transportation seemed to be a top issue, and before they'd done the 1B funding. Anyways, the legislature fixed that basically last year, and now, in excess, they made what they called the gas tax swap, which made Prop 42 holders no money in Prop 42 funding. But it basically took the tax on gas and diesel, and it capped it and left in transportation at about the $3 a gallon. So as gas and diesel approaches $4 a gallon, the cap of that over the $3 will start going, flowing back into public health. So that should help your realignment dollars going back into public health because, but it's we, the voters, you can't blame the legislature, we, the voters, that took that out of public health with Prop 42. So I've had this document in my desk for the last two or three years, and I knew when this passed, that in the future, I'd probably have to remind the people, you know, we done it to ourselves, it wasn't the Russians.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I would, I think it's time to move on, but I would like to hear about a potential date in the future to set this hearing.
I believe Supervisor Brown, it is delineated in the consent item that we would take up after this item. The specifics are mentioned there. Is it February, is it March 22?
March 22.
Yes.
Yes, March 22, I believe. But I think it's, Janine looks like she's going to comment. It's up to the board to set a date, I believe.
We need to accept this report.
It's a 14-day notice requirement.
We need to accept this report and then make the motion on the consent.
Yeah, we've got one more.
So that's in item 11.
Correct, yes. But we did have one more public comment on the topic of Planned Parenthood, very briefly. Anyone else that wants to address this general topic, please come forward.
Val Mahowski, Philo, President of the National Women's Political Caucus. We've had an experience here in Mendocino County with Planned Parenthood. We worked for five years to get Planned Parenthood to come to Ukiah. They stayed for five years, and then they walked out on us without even telling us that they were leaving. And Dan Hamburg remembers that we had some people picketing Planned Parenthood, and then we had some people in support of Planned Parenthood. And we had no idea that they were going to just, you know, take their things and leave in the middle of the night. So I would use a little caution when dealing with Planned Parenthood. That's my only thought.
Thank you.
My name's Jaclyn Carvallo, and I just wanted to comment very briefly. As a private citizen, not as a representative of anybody, compliments Stacy Crier on her excellent job on making these extremely difficult choices. And one of the things that's missing for me in the structural reorganization of our, of the services overall that we provide, including family planning or anything else that we're looking for in the future, is, you know, there's been some situations recently that have developed that have cast some light on monies, like with the retirement system and things like that, the services that we're providing with the contractors that are doing our services, like Buck Consulting and things like that. And one of the things that, every decision that we're making based on these reduced revenues is cut, cut, cut. And one of the things that I'd like to see as a private citizen are some forensic audits of some of our internal functions to find out if there are, if there is money that is not being properly collected or utilized within the county services as there is. So, you know, I think we need to take a look at that. I think there's some very concrete evidence that suggests that through, maybe no fault of our own, but some of the services that we're providing, we could be drawing down additional funds. I think one of the things that the public wants to see is an accounting of the money. If we in fact stop providing some of these services, whether it's family planning or something else, are we in fact not drawing down and utilizing the money that's coming in completely to Mendocino County? As we all know, there's a trickle-down effect, and the money that we're not getting doesn't come into our community. So I think as the future goes forward, and we know that it's like taking three years to make some of these decisions, we're not out of the woods. We don't project to be out of the woods until 214. Maybe some of the decisions to take some, a look internally within to make sure that we are capitalizing on all the revenue that can come into the county would be another avenue to prevent some of these catastrophic cuts in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's return to the board for discussion on the item. This is item number 6B.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may, I know we want to get on to, to setting the Beelinson hearing, and I just had just one quick comment to what Val was talking about. As I remember it, Planned Parenthood did leave rather precipitously, but there was also quite a bit of public pressure put on them. And I don't know, you know, where they were in their history as an organization, but I do remember some, some rather virulent protests that went on against family planning right there on Dora Street, must have been in the late 80s. And, what?
92.
Oh, was that, well, anyway, you know, I would hope Planned Parenthood, you know, if there is a niche for them, would be welcomed back into this community. And I just had one quick question, maybe for Stacy, or I'm sure there are many people who know the answer to this. Are abortion services currently available to women in Mendocino County?
Not in Mendocino County, no.
And what's the reason for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wendy has an answer. In Fort Bragg.
In Fort Bragg? At the Fort Bragg?
Women's Health Center?
At the Women's Health Center.
Please, if you'd like to address the issue, could you come to the microphone, please?
Because, anyway.
I'm Wendy Walsh, and I'm part of the staff of the Family Planning Center. There are services available for abortions in Fort Bragg at the Women's Health Center, Dr. Guttner. And Planned Parenthood has said that they will not initially be doing any abortion services. They're already anticipating picketing and all of that, so they don't need additional problems once they come in.
But there are no services available inland?
No, no. We just did referral. We did pregnancy testing and referral for services, but no, nothing.
Kind of remarkable.
All right, moving on, back to, back to the board to, for action on 6B, which is accept the report.
Yes, Chair Smith, I'll move acceptance of the report.
Good. Motion by Supervisor Brown?
Well, that could be done just by order of the chair, actually.
We could, but.
Go ahead.
Second? I mean, you know, I was looking for, did we get everyone's support?
Gentlemen.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Step up, someone. Seconded by Supervisor Pinches. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. It passes unanimously for item 6B. Then we'll move on back to board members for consideration of consent item 411.
I'll make a motion to approve consent item 11.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Pinches for, this is consent item 411. We have a second by Supervisor McCowen. We'll now go to public comment on the motion. Seeing none, we'll go back to the board. Any board comments, Supervisor Brown?
Okay, so this March 22, 2011 date is pretty much set upon because the motion, basically, recommended motion said the board chair to assign a date in time for public hearing. I just think it's fair to the public that's here to get it publicly announced and dated. So I want to make sure we have something concrete here today.
Well, I think, so looking at the agenda item, it does say March 22 is the requested date for the hearing. As per council's comments, it requires a 14-day notification. So I think we would not necessarily be held by the agenda item to the 22nd. In other words, we wouldn't need to renotice it. But I think Supervisor Brown's comments are well-taken, that the more we can adhere and stick to that date, but if something should arise unforeseen, we could still alter that date.
Yeah, we're in the process of reviewing the notice, which should be, which should go out on the 3rd of March, and it will be scheduled for March 22nd, so I don't foresee any problems.
Okay, so we're, I think we're covered.
Okay. Then I can support the motion.
Okay, so we have our motion and our second, and that is for, as listed in the agenda summary for item 411. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I just can't say enough, and I've said it many times, I say it, of, I'm really thankful for what the health clinic system in this county has done for all of Mendocino, all the way from Wallala to the North County. I just can't say enough to all the people that are on the boards and everything, and all the people that work there. It's really, it's really transformed Mendocino County from when I was a kid and living in the North County to what it is today. It's really remarkable. I go into the health clinic in Willets, and I go to the ones in Leightonville once in a while, and I got a lot of friends that work there and everything, but it's just remarkable, those services. And this is a prime example of where they're picking up the slack, and I, I just really can't say enough and thank you for all the people involved in them. Because it's, like I say, it's the best thing that's happened to Mendocino County in the last 100 years.
Thank you, Supervisor. To the CEO, would we be able to adjourn early to closed session? I think we have a fair, you know, I think we're going to have plenty of content there.
Madam Chair, that's fine. We can adjourn early to closed session.
We can. Okay, so the board will take a five-minute break, and then we'll adjourn to closed session at 11:15. And the board will.
We're having a 25-minute?
The board will return.
11:15. 11:15.
And the board will return to the conference room C at 1:30 for our scheduled museum discussion. And the board will return to the Conference Room C at 1:30 for our scheduled museum discussion.
About this program, this was an idea we come up with over a year ago and MTA took it up and actually got a small grant to move it forward and Glenna Blake is here to make the presentation. Throughout this county, you know, there's two things. We have a hard time create, creating public transportation for these rural areas where there's very few little ridership, but still the need is there and actually people, taxpayers all over pay a percentage of that through your sales tax and whatnot, so they're entitled to some sort of public transportation. But on the other side of the spectrum, the taxpayers hate to see a big long bus driving out in these rural parts of the county with just a bus driver, maybe one person in it, drives taxpayers nuts. So this is a way which we presented by Glenn, I think to meet the needs of the rural areas. I think this is an I knew idea that's developed right here by MTA Mendocino County that hopefully will spread throughout the state because I think it's a way to meet, to meet the transportation needs of small areas where there's very sparse populated areas and it'll meet the needs and serve, serve especially seniors and people that don't have their own cars and whatnot and especially with, with the price of gas going up. So it's, it's all about energy conservation, fuel savings and all that, but it certainly meets the needs. So Glenn, thank you for coming.
I don't know if this is on?
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, thank you Supervisor Pinches, I have to say you just took my whole agenda away. Anyway, Supervisor Pinches did ask us to come and make a brief presentation and tell you a little bit about what we're doing and in essence, we really are taking Mendocino Transit Authority in a new direction. And I'm sorry, I can't take the credit to say that this is just happening here in Mendocino County because the idea of mobility management, which encompasses a whole family of transportation services, really is happening within the transit industry today as we speak because of the problems that Supervisor Pinches addressed. Transit just can't be everything to everyone. It is no longer financially feasible to run buses to Covelo and et cetera where we just don't, we are unable to make our productivity standards. So I, as Supervisor Pinches mentioned, I did receive a grant and we did do a commute study grant. And out of that grant came the recommendation that we start in the northern part of the county, which has been underserved as far as public transit goes, and use the communities of Covelo and Laytonville as pilot projects and look at providing voucher programs and the whole family of volunteer driver services. So we have been working, my colleague Deborah Dorian here, who is our Mobility Management Coordinator, we've been working on, on this for several months now. We hope to launch the program E-Ride first in Covelo in the latter part of this month or the beginning of April and then we were going, then we are going to Laytonville and after that, if success is as much as we think it will be, we will then go into other communities, rural, small rural communities in the county that are underserved now with public transit. So I'd like Deborah to say just a few words.
How's that? Is that better? Sorry. The Supervisors have a brochure that shows, or that explains a little bit about the program. It's still just a draft, but it does explain basically the, the key elements behind the program. The beauty of the program, as far as I see it, is its simplicity. There is basically a flat rate voucher that we give to, per community, depending on the distance traveled. As Glenna said, excuse me, we're starting in Covelo, that's the longest distance, excuse me. And so we'll be providing a voucher for up to $10 for a round trip to Willets. What happens is we offer screening in order to make these trips as safe as possible. We screen the driver and the passenger. The driver goes through a driver's record check for volunteer driver's record check service that we already have incorporated. And then the passengers, both of them fill out an application form. We approve the application, they get on two separate lists, a drivers, approved drivers' list and an approved passengers' list. And our dispatch then matches those, finds what, what can, what passengers can go with which drivers, calls the drivers, excuse me, with the passengers' names and phone numbers and then the drivers, the drivers are the ones who eventually make the appointments with the passengers. And they set up the appointments, therefore the liability is removed for a great deal from, from us. And they set up where they're going to meet, what time exactly, you know, with what the exact ramifications are going to be. So that is most of the beauty. We also do vehicle inspection checks, spot checks. We will also be conducting interviews or some kind of evaluation of both the drivers and the passengers to see, to check in and make sure everyone's happy. Where basically, basically it's a program that is based on mutual trust and consideration that is part of the, the program that we're promoting. Hope that explains it.
Anyone have any questions?
I'd just like to add a couple of things. This being a real energy efficient, you know, there's a real incentive to, to basically, it's a modified carpool program. For instance, if a person with this program, we started out in Covelo, if they can find three riders, then that person has the potential of collecting $30 for the round trip. So there's a real incentive there to get that extra person to ride with you. So it's a real, it's an incentive to not only, it's going to save energy, gas and diesel, but it's, it's a real effort to, to really enhance what you'd call a, a carpooling program. And, you know, we have to achieve a 14.9% fare box ratio if you run a route, so we couldn't achieve that in these rural areas, so we couldn't even run a, take, send a bus driver in a bus. But with this, we can probably run this program on about 10% of the operating dollars that we do if we were running buses and hiring drivers to go to these outline areas. So once we, I believe that this will expand certainly throughout the county and I think it'll take off in other rural counties too. But it's, it's, it's a pretty simple program, although there's been a lot of little hiccups involved in getting it online, but I really appreciate and excited about it, starting off probably in, sometime in April.
Thank you.
So, so tell everybody about it, it's called E-Ride.
Supervisor.
It's an incentive Supervisor Pinches, just like the diamond lanes during computer, commuter rush hour.
But this gives you, this gives you a financial incentive, not just the idea of, yeah, I'm better at cleaning up the environment and I'm using less energy, but there's actually a financial incentive which, which pays to participate, but the financial incentive will save the Transit Authority a lot of money and still be able to provide the service.
No, I think it's a great program. But each one of these programs, you know, it really is an incentive to individuals to be progressive and, and seek out partnerships and those forms.
As our representative on CSAC, maybe you could submit this for the award.
Oh, great idea.
It'd be like that.
Hey, yes.
Well, thank you Supervisor Pinches, it's a great, it's a great idea. I hope it's very successful in the North County and I hope we become sort of a transportation identity for Mendocino County and it spreads. It's a great way to build community and thank you for doing it.
And I look, it's for be a real improvement, helping the South Coast do, once we get it online.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Glenna. Deborah.
So we'll next move forward with our timed item from 3:15, running a little late. This is item number 5C. This is presentation, discussion, approval of the Mendocino County Lodging Business Improvement District Bid Annual Report. Adoption of resolution declaring the intention of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors to levy and collect an assessment from lodging businesses in the bid. We will go to the executive office staff to introduce the item.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Dunlop with the County Executive Office. The Mendocino County Lodging Business Improvement District, or BID, was established in 2006 through ordinance 4170. This ordinance added chapter 5.140 to the Mendocino County Code. According to this chapter of the code, the bid's purpose is to provide revenue to defray the costs of services, activities and programs promoting tourism, which will benefit the operators of hotels in the district through the promotion and marketing of the hotels and related products, including scenic, recreational, cultural and other attractions. The bid enables the collection of 1% gross room rent assessment from all lodging businesses within the district. The district encompasses all unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county. Ordinance 4170 requires the county to provide a 50% match to the assessment collected. Your board appoints a bid advisory board to cause the creation of the annual report that's before you today. Ultimately, the report becomes a key component of the county's declaration to levy and collect the bid assessment in the coming year. The bid renewal process is an annual two-part process and it begins today with the adoption of a resolution, accepting the report and setting a notice public hearing for March 22nd. The public hearing will give an opportunity for assessed businesses to protest. Barring protest, you'd be asked to adopt a resolution confirming your acceptance of the report today and continuing the assessment for the coming year. The county's contractual promotional partners in this, which are outlined in the report, include the Mendocino County Lodging Association, or MCLA, and the Mendocino County Promotional Alliance, or MCPA. County Code requires the, the county to contract annually with MCLA prior to the expenditure of any bid funds. The county Code also requires the county to contract with either MCLA or MCPA prior to the expenditure of any county match. To date, the county has always contracted with MCPA for this expenditure. In 2009, a new organization was created to serve as the primary contractor of MCLA and MCPA in implementing their marketing plan. Known as Visit Mendocino County Incorporated, or VMC, this organization has a 10-member board comprised of five members each from MCLA and MCPA. With me today is Scott Schneider, the former executive director of MCLA and the former chair of MCPA and the current president and CEO of VMC, or Visit Mendocino County. We've also got Jason Hurst, the current chair of the MCLA board. I'd like to turn it over to the two of them.
Thank you. Before, I have some remarks. I'd like to present a couple of things to the county. So first you'll notice outside that every year we present you with the award we get at the California State Fair. So 2010, we did get a silver award, so I'll present, I don't have nine copies, I apologize, but I will present that to you. And we also received a, kind of an informal request from the executive office. You have just redone your offices, you have a lot of blank walls and we would like to partner with you to try and beautify the walls with some pictures and promotional things of, of what we do. So I'm here to present our first two pieces and you may put them wherever you like and I will give these to you. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I stand before you for the sixth time in so many years requesting your acceptance for the Business Improvement District Annual Report, this time for the 2011-12 year. Some of you have heard this request for six years and for some of you, this is a first. Regardless, I guarantee you this program works. It shows more success every year. It works for the lodging industry, the wine industry, the culinary industry, the art industry, it works for all aspects of the travel industry and it works for the county. I stand before you for the sixth time with more excitement, enthusiasm, successes than ever before, realizing what has been accomplished in such a short period of time and what is yet to come. Go back about 12 years when the promotional alliance was formed and received all funds from the county's general fund. Each year the alliance had to come before the board to request funds and justify its, its existence. Some years were better than others, receiving anywhere from $505,000 to $150,000 annually. It is noted in 2002-03 county budget that the Supervisors requested the alliance look into establishing a tourism bid. Working at first with the Wine Growers Alliance and then with the Lodging Association, a bid was approved beginning in the 2006-07 year with the county allocating $300,000 for the 50% match. The lodging industry and its partners have not asked for an increase in six years and only asked for the county's partnership in ensuring a strong tax base through the travel industry. Visitors, as we know, bring dollars from the outside. These dollars have what's called the iceberg effect. Once a dollar is brought from outside the county, it then gets spent again and again inside the county. A restaurant receives money from a visiting family. Those dollars are then used to pay a local, a local food vendor. The local food vendor then pays its employees, the employee then buys items from a hardware store and so on. All of this possible from the visitor's dollar. This is nothing new. The following is from the 2001 grand jury report after evaluating the MCPA. Employees, consumers and businesses pay taxes that support our county. If they are not economically healthy, our county cannot afford to provide the services that we desire. When businesses fail, employees lose their jobs and families fall into economic crises. Our county budget suffers. Many people blame the county government for not providing one or another service, but if the county does not have the tax base to support these services, they cannot afford to provide them. If you decide not to accept this report and not to provide the bid match, you will be stopping the heartbeat of the travel and industry throughout the county. We are the glue for many businesses and organizations in getting their word out. Without the bid and VMC, no avenue exists for stories to be told, festivals and events to be featured. Yes, travelers will still come, but how many and how long will they stay? As other counties and destinations increase budgets and programs, with their counties fully understanding the importance of their investment, especially during these economic trying times, we will fall through the cracks and quickly be forgotten as Napa's promotional budget increased 800%. Humboldt's promotional budget is set to increase 300%, where their county invests 19% of their TOT into promotion. Marin's promotional budget doubled with their county investing 55 to 60% of their TOT. Sonoma investing 23 to 24% into promotion and Lake County investing over 100% of their TOT into promotion. With an 8% reinvestment of the TOT funds you receive annually for promotion, you can keep the heartbeat of our travel industry strong. Our past and current success greatly relies on the partnerships we have built both in the county and throughout California. A partner packet was just developed explaining what we do, our history, our programs, our budgets. I have some packets available for you today, should you desire one. The packet provides valuable tools to help businesses do their own marketing. It lists ways to partner with VMC's programs that will directly enhance their own marketing programs. For many small businesses and organizations throughout the county, this partnership is their only means of getting their story told, of marketing their product. With the packets just developed a few weeks ago, over two dozen of these meetings have already taken place with businesses sharing their stories, challenges and ideas with me, which ultimately result in a better marketing program for both VMC and the individual business. One example is the Mendocino Coast Wreckin' Park District. They have called on their community to help bail itself out and keep vital services open. VMC met with district staff and board members to see how it could help with its marketing, ultimately distributing thousands of brochures to visitors, encouraging and assisting in building partnership with local lodging establishments and more. Another example of our success are the festivals and events that we promote and support. These provide hundreds of thousands of dollars of spending. This past November with our Mushroom and Wine Festival and this past January with our Crab and Wine Festival, lodgings were sold out, restaurants full, wine tasting rooms and shops busy when normally these are very slow times. Want in owner figured out the county would collect over $80,000 less in TOT annually if these two festivals did not exist. This, of course, does not include the sales tax received from non-lodging activities attendees spend. Without the bid and VMC, these monies would not be available for the general fund. Our festivals were busier this year than at any point in the past 11 years. This takes effort. We didn't get to be named on Oprah.com as having one of the top six food and wine festivals in the country, whereas one of Coastal Living magazine's top 10 seafood and wine festivals in the country without this promotion. These efforts, this promotion brings people here and ultimately more tax dollars. We are effective. Without the bid, VMC and its programs, you may see some messages out there, a bit of advertising for a train here and ad for a hotel there, but the increase of articles in the SF Chronicle, LA Times, Via Magazine, Sunset Magazine and so many more would severely decrease. We have built a strong reputation in the public relations world of reliability and effectiveness, meaning editors, producers and writers know we are reliable and will get them what they need for a good story and we have a lot of good stories to tell. We are effective. Without the bid, you will not see the attractive ad on a billboard on IOD East in Berkeley or hear a, a radio ad driving through the San Francisco Bay Area on KGO encouraging people to visit Mendocino County. Visitor Centers and Chambers will not receive that bit of extra funding to stay open on a Saturday or Sunday, to provide that bit of extra service to our visitors or even to stay open at all. No website would exist for all the 500 or so businesses to get their message, their photo, their special, their package, their video, their brand, to the hundreds of thousands of people that plan trips. There will be no visitor guide talking about the diversity of our county, encouraging people to stay longer and spend more while they're here. We are effective. Helping grape growers invent their cellar grapes and cellar wine is a significant component of what we do. There have been numerous opportunities we have taken advantage of to market America's greenest wine. greenest wine region. With the support of the wine grape and wine industry, we have marketed America's greenest wine region to media, consumers, tour operators, other wine industries, and travel destinations throughout California and the world. In fact, our partnership with the Mendocino Wine Grape and Wine Commission has blossomed in the past year, partnering on radio advertising, PR efforts, sales efforts, events, and more. And this is just the beginning. What makes us so effective? It's our programs, our partners, our staff, board members, volunteers, and contracted help. But even more so, it's our stories. It's the people of this county. There are wine countries throughout the world, but there is no wine country but the stories, the history, and the people that we have. We are here to tell that story. Without us, who's going to tell it? Businesses may be able to reach out a bit beyond their front gate, but without our support and partnership, there is no way to get their story to the Bay Area, throughout the U.S., and ultimately the world. This is what we are here for. With regards to county government, VMC is hopeful in the continuation of a strong partnership to develop and implement more economic development activities beyond just promotion. I have a meeting with some of you, including the CEO and her staff, in working to further develop this partnership. One possibility is developing ambassadors, your senior managers and others throughout the county, arming them with the knowledge and tools to market this county as the ultimate getaway. So as these professionals go out and do work on behalf of the county, helping to keep Mendocino County in the conversation, they can help bring more visitors and ultimately more tax dollars. Another example is our expanding role in providing potential business owners the knowledge and tools they need to open a business in the county. VMC already does this by providing requested information, but I'm sure through developing our partnership, we could do more. Out-of-county partnerships are vital as well. If there is no Mendocino County promotion, we have no way of taking advantage of the fifty million dollars the state spends annually on marketing itself nationally and internationally. California tourism will have no one to work with in this county to provide them with a constant flow of information they request for specials, packages, stories, events, photos, videos, and more that they use in their activities. Without the bid and VMC, the North Coast Tourism Council, of which we are the lead, would most likely cease, again, missing the opportunity to receive approximately eighty thousand dollars in grants to promote the region, building the partnership with our surrounding counties, and reaching the international market, of which one lodging partner says is fifty percent of their business. Furthermore, Mendocino County currently chairs California Tourism's Rural Marketing Advisory Committee. We are quite literally the face of rural California for the next two years at least, and are leading the way in how California markets its great outdoors throughout its fifty million dollars worth of programs. Without the bid and VMC, this opportunity would not exist. All of these opportunities and many more would disappear without the bid, VMC, and the match that you provide. Businesses would have to rely on themselves to market. They would have to rely on their own very limited resources. We make sure those new businesses that have put every single dollar, every single penny they had into opening their tasting room, or starting their vacation rental, or opening their inn, get the best of what we have to offer. We are and will continue to be a resource for these businesses, their employees, and their visitors. For many of these small businesses, we are their marketing program. Our intent for the two thousand and eleven-twelve bid annual report is to continue the programs and initiatives that have proven successful, while also improving our messaging behind those programs to ensure greater success and return on investment. One recent activity to significantly help us improve is a focus group held just last week with marketing professionals from around the state to look at our programs, our results, our budgets, and recommend ways to be more effective. These professionals donated their time, paid their own way to spend three hours evaluating our program. The result? We do more with a nine hundred thousand dollar budget than other destinations with a budget two to three times that amount. While suggesting ways to improve, they were all greatly impressed with our accomplishments over the past several years. We are not wasting anyone's money, especially the taxpayers. Yes, we are asking you to reinvest eight percent of the bid tax that we bring you as a lodging industry to this county. This does not include the sales tax, as well as the property tax, of all the travel and lodging businesses throughout the county. We are asking you to reinvest eight percent to keep this program going strong. We are also doing our part, charging our visitors to fund two-thirds of the bid's efforts. Some lodging properties have even discussed a future possibility of increasing the assessment in the coming year or years, trying to remain a strong player within California's travel industry. This would mean more programs, more marketing, all to increase our tax base, keeping businesses open, and residents employed. As I mentioned earlier, counties and destinations all around us are increasing their promotional budgets two, three, and four times. We need to keep up. If we don't, that TOT decrease one of you mentioned a few weeks ago would be much worse. Instead of a decrease from three point eight to three point four million, we'd be looking at three million or even two point eight million. Without these efforts, your budget would be in worse shape than it currently is in. Without the county providing one-third of the funding, with the county providing one-third of the funding, your return on investment is tremendous. This is the earliest we have ever presented this report. I thank the MCLA board, as well as the bid advisory board and the county executive office, for the many hours spent on its preparation. There is no controversy within the travel industry in the presentation of this report. Communities throughout the county support the bid, VMC, its programs, and partnerships. There are certainly folks who think we should be doing things differently. This would not be Mendocino County without them. But the support of the overall programs, the bid, including the match you provide, is tremendous. I believe there may be some people here who may have a few words to say about regarding how the bid, VMC, and its programs have helped their business, their organization, and their story to be told. There's also a stack of letters that we have presented to you from business owners and organizational boards who have seen benefit from our programs who could not be here today. I would like to call out one of these letters from the Redwood Coast Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. To our state and county representatives, the Redwood Coast Chamber of Commerce, representing twelve villages and their members in southern Mendocino County, benefit greatly from the marketing efforts of Visit Mendocino County. Because of limited and unreliable service, the internet economy is not yet a reality for us, and we rely on this countywide organization to publicize this coastal region for us. Otherwise, people would tend to skip us and go right to the town of Mendocino only. Visit Mendocino County does exactly what we would do for ourselves if we had the money. If tourism dries up, our small towns dry up. This match is economic development. It is an economic development program that is sustainable and that works, that can expand and help provide those vital county services we have all come to expect and appreciate. Timber and fishing are not going to jump back as economic engines of our county anytime soon. We have to rely more and more on the tourism and travel industry. Of course, we don't want you to cut public safety, or to not continue to protect public lands, but the bid is the only economic development public-private partnership we have, and while helping to fund public safety and to help fund the continuation of the protection of public lands, it also works. Again, I'd like to quote the two thousand and one grand jury report with the following. The population of Mendocino County is too small to support a self-contained local economy. We must sell a significant amount of goods and services to consumers who live outside our county. This is as true today as it was in the eighteen-fifties. Without strong, sustainable export industries, our county budget will face periodic crisis, unemployment will be too high, and too many families will not be financially secure. So now, the question lies with you. Is this program, these efforts, the vitality of the travel industry and its five thousand four hundred employees, the over twenty million dollars of local and state tax revenue it brings, the three hundred and thirty-six million dollars of annual travel spending worth the investment of the three hundred thousand dollar match from the county general fund, again, eight percent of what you directly receive from visitors? I believe it is worth it, as does the abundant businesses and organizations throughout Mendocino County that rely on visitors for their economic vitality and ultimate survival. So please, we strongly urge you to accept this report, supporting our thriving and successful partnership, allowing us to continue to work hard for you, for the travel industry, for all of Mendocino County, ultimately keeping the heartbeat of our county's travel industry going strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go first to board member questions if we have any.
Is there another part?
Oh, yes, yes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the board for allowing me to present as well today with Scott. I wanted to read a short section of a letter to someone who most of you are familiar with for quite some time, Joyce Beard, who has served as, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jason Hurst, I'm the president of the Lodging Association. Did you? Okay, all right. Joyce Beard served as your clerk for twenty-one years, and she, until recently resigning from Visit Mendocino County, was a contractor who worked on developing the festivals that we have in the county. She submitted a letter that I just want to read a portion of, and in that letter as well, she identifies that actually before this announcement was made regarding the budget that she had already submitted her resignation to Visit Mendocino County. So she's writing from her own experience. As your clerk for twenty-one years, I had the opportunity to observe the various renditions of the tourism bureaus that the county funded through the years, of which, I'm sorry, through the years, some of which were less than effective. I can assure you that Visit Mendocino County is truly making a difference. In my current capacity as event coordinator for VMC, I have the opportunity to travel throughout the county and visit the wineries, restaurants, lodging establishments, and talk with owners and visitors. During these visits, I hear what a great job VMC is doing and what a difference they have noticed since the current organization has been in place. They are seeing the benefits of promotion in getting tourists into their establishments, not only during our shoulder season festivals, but year-round. If you follow the increased media attention on our festivals and the general recognition of our county as a tourism destination, you know that this didn't just happen, but was the result of a dedicated campaign program. I hope you will also take the time to review VMC's quarterly reports. I'm sure you will be impressed with what this very small group accomplishes for the benefit of Mendocino County. And with respect to that, the biggest point I think that Scott was trying to make is that we are, Mendocino County is a player in the state's marketing of travel and tourism, and that says a lot. And they want us to be the lead for developing rural tourism throughout the state. So they think, the state thinks, that we're doing something right. And lastly, something that came up that a lot of actual lodging members weren't aware of is that if you decide not to match the fund, the bid ordinance becomes null because it's required in that, and that's something that a lot of lodging members were not aware of prior to this go-around and this announcement. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So let's go to questions from board members of our presenters, and then we'll go to the public. Supervisor Pinches?
Just a comment. I spoke to Joyce this morning after I read the letter, and you know, I served with Joyce when she was clerk of the board, and if she puts her stamp of approval on you guys are spending your money well, well, that's good enough for me, because she keeps pretty close eyes. She did then, in her twenty-two-year term here, and she still keeps a close eye, but that's a very, that's affirmative coming from Joyce Beard, that you guys are spending your money well.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Well, not to be outdone by my colleague, I also served with Joyce Beard back in the eighties. And I agree with you, John. It's good to have Joyce on your side. This particular request has a lot to do with the fifth district. I don't think there's any supervisory district, I'm sure there's no supervisory district, that benefits as much, that contributes as much, or that benefits as much from VMC and from all the programs that come forth from these contributions and from this district. I was looking, I was reading the report, and I was looking at the organizational chart on page five, and it really struck me, just looking at the numbers of people who are involved on these four boards, at least fifty, fifty-one board members, is that right? Nineteen and seventeen and ten and five. So, you know, looking at all the people who are involved on boards and sort of the alphabet soup of MCP, you know, sometimes I'm going, is it MCPA, or MCLA, or VMC, or bid? I mean, there's a lot of organizational dynamics here. And so what I'm leading to is that it's not a surprise that there is not a hundred percent consensus that everything you're doing is right. I think that a whole lot of what you're doing is right, and I see the evidence of that. I see the evidence not only in these comments, and, you know, I've only been a board member a couple of months this time around, but I haven't seen as much input on any issue, and mostly on the favorable side as I have on this issue. And it's not just from these fifty-one board members, it's from people mostly in the coast, but from around the county. I do, and Madam Chair, if now is the right time to do it, I do want to draw attention to some issues that have been raised about the report and about the functioning of the bid, and, you know, just because, you know, I really feel like, you know, the more we get out on the table, the more we discuss publicly, the better. You know, I don't think there need to be, you know, any things, any subjects that we don't, excuse me, that we don't look into, and, you know, so I just want to ask you, Scott, in particular, to address some of the issues. Let me just start with one. When this bid was originally set up, there was an understanding that ninety percent of the funds would be used for promotion. According to some of the people who were supporters of the bid, and by the way, who continue to be supporters of the bid, that ratio has not been adhered to, and perhaps the amount, you know, the amount for promotion is claimed by some to be maybe as low as sixty percent, with something like forty percent going to administrative functions. And so could you address that first?
So when the bid was first brought forth in front of the lodging community throughout the county, there was a, not in writing, but there was a promise that not more than ten percent would be used for administration. And, you know, the board, and I was one of them at the time, I was vice president of Lodging Association at the time, did this because they were worried about, at the time, what the Promotional Alliance was spending on administration and costs and all that stuff, and they were worried not enough would go towards promotion, towards activities. So in order to do that in the first year, I think we had a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. Less than ten percent was for administration. They hired a part-time contractor, me, for twenty hours a week, and they had, we had no office, we had nothing. What we did is we spent three hundred and eighty-five thousand of those five hundred and fifty going outside the county to an advertising firm in San Francisco to do all our administration and our activities for us. Second year of the bid, I went to my board, I was obviously no longer on the board now full-time. It took a year to convince them that actually needed, this effort needed someone full-time. I went back to the board and I said, "Look, we're giving this advertising firm too much. We can do more ourselves and keep some of the money here." And so they agreed, you know, all baby steps, to allow that to happen. So in the second year, this advertising firm got less, and more stayed within the county. The third year, I recommended getting rid of the advertising firm altogether. So technically, yes, we could hire an advertising firm somewhere else in the state, or maybe, you know, we'd find someone in the county. We could contract it all out, and then we'd have no administration costs, it would all be contracted out. That's not a very good way to do things that we learned through the first few years of the bid. We also, in order to keep that promise to lodging, and maybe this is playing numbers a sort of way, you know, Visit Mendocino County, we receive five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of the bid from lodging. If you look at the annual report, none of those actual funds are going to be used to run the operations of the bid. The match, your match, is going to be used to run the operations of the bid. So again, it's really a choice. It takes people to do the work. We all know that. Anyone who runs a business knows, if you don't have staff, there's no activities. You know, maybe some of my board members can come up after me and talk to this more, but I know that some numbers have been thrown out there that are not the case at all, and I really would rather not go into public about that stuff.
But you feel that it is closer to what the original intention was in terms of the ratio of promotional activity to administration?
Yes, and in fact, one of the reasons that I had this focus group last week was to ask that very question. And the response was, wow, that's all you guys spent on administration? And I said, there's no way that we could do more. Again, because if you have the, we could hire a social media person full-time. You're talking fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, and we would be out there in the online world to, I mean, the return on investment would be huge, but we'll do it.
Scott, another thing that concerns me, because I've heard about it from, you know, people that I, whose opinions I respect, really is a criticism of the Board of Supervisors and the way that it works with the Board, the Board of Directors of the bid. And I think the criticism is basically that the board does not fulfill a very active oversight role, that it appoints people to this five-member advisory board, and then pretty much lets it, lets it go, and once a year, it kind of tunes in on it. And, you know, I think then, obviously, people who don't like everything that's going on will say, you know, gee, if the board got a little more involved and really watched what was happening, they would see the same things we're seeing, and we'd have a more effective process. What do you think about that?
Sure, so a couple answers to that. Highly encourage you to get involved. I know Supervisor McCallum just requested that all agenda for McAllen just requested that all agenda for VMC and MCLA, you know, he gets notices, and if he can attend, I'm sure, I'm sure that he will. We submit quarterly reports that list out our goals and what we've accomplished, a list of activities of what we've done that past quarter. But I am happy to sit down with any of you or any of your constituents at any point. The whole purpose of this partner package, and I apologize, I left them in my car, is to do just that, sit down with any business owner, or resident for that matter, in the county, and explain what we do, why we do it, our history, and why it's effective. So, you know, I encourage you to-
Well, I want to say, just as one board member, it wasn't, it wasn't really until the past week that I've gotten this flood of input on this issue. And I would really prefer, if next year, when this comes around, that I would have been hearing from people, you know, not every day or every week, but, you know, at least on a sort of monthly or semi-monthly basis, and people are saying, "Well, here's what's going on," you know, and, you know, I don't know if that should come from you, Scott, or from you, Jason, or from Steve, or who, but I feel, as a board member, for one thing, because this is a precious $300,000, which is, you know, a small percentage of what your industry brings into the county, I understand all that, but it's still a chunk of money for us. I mean, we agonize over spending a tenth of that sometimes. So, you know, I feel like, as one board member, I need to be more in the loop next time this comes around.
I just wanted to make one comment with respect to what we do at the board meetings, is that every month, Scott presents us with an activities report that Visit Mendocino County has done since the last time that we met. We also take the opportunity to review the budgets that are put together by the Visit Mendocino County Board and approve them, as well as the marketing plan. And so, you know, and getting, and it's been an effort since I actually was nominated to be the chair of the Lodging Association, to make all of the documents and all of the, everything that comes out of the Lodging Association available and noticed to all members in the community at large.
So we'll go to public comment, and then we'll return and return to the board for more discussion.
I'd like to just clarify one thing. It's, I believe it's not only that the county must agree to the match, but also the lodging owners within the unincorporated area, within the city of Ukiah, within the city of Willets, within the city of Fort Bragg, and Point Arena also, must all approve the bid, or it would expire.
May I clarify?
Yeah.
So today, if the report, if the report is accepted, that lets hap in a public hearing that's currently scheduled for March 22nd. At that point, lodging establishments, only lodging establishments, because they're the ones that collect the assessment, can come forth and protest the bid. So it's a no vote. There's two bid laws, the one that we chose, we have to renew annually, and it's a no vote. The other one is every five years, and it's a yes vote. So on the 22nd, if more than 50% of the bid dollars come forth and protest the bid, the bid fails. If not, then you ratify this, hopefully what will be today's resolution, and the bid continues for another year. So lodging will have an opportunity on March 22nd to, in writing, it has to be in writing, either on the day or before, I believe, to protest the bid.
But I believe also that if any individual city or the unincorporated county, you know, the lodging establishments within that jurisdiction, if they don't approve it, the bid would fail.
The bid in that city would fail?
Only in that city.
Only in that city.
Okay.
Thank you.
But the fact, the fact that you do get the support of everyone countywide, I think is pretty remarkable, and it shows that you are actively marketing the entire county. And the fact that the Lodging Association and the Promotional Alliance, which I think used to have a certain amount of animosity towards each other or rivalry, waiting for the other one to die, have now been working together, you know, in a very exemplary way. And extending that out to partnerships with the Wine and Wine Grape Commission, the Arts Council, becoming a regional leader for tourism, and also, the promotional entities used to always be at odds with the county. So, you know, we've really come a long way in a short period of time. And I, I think frankly, a lot of the credit for that, it goes to the Lodging Association and the Promotional Alliance, but it also goes to you personally. Thank you.
So we'll go to public comment. First, we have Stanley Anderson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Stan Anderson. For the record, I'm chair of the Republican Central Committee for Mendocino County. Our Central Committee strongly opposes the proposal by Mendocino County CEO Carmel Angelo to redirect $300,000 of bid matching funds toward other county expenses. We believe that this is a classic example of penny wise and pound foolish. The county match of $300,000, when added to the more than $600,000 raised by bid members, allows almost $1 million to promote Mendocino County to visitors and businesses around the state and the country. In 2008, that promotion brought some $20 million to county lodging facilities and businesses, while providing jobs for more than 5,400 people, resulting in some $7.8 million flowing into county coffers in the form of taxes, mostly in the same or the following year of the promotion investment. That's an extraordinarily quick turnaround time, with a return on investment to the county of 26 to 1. In other words, for every $100 of matching funds, the county received $2,600 in taxes. From a business perspective, the county's matching funds are a very wise use of taxpayer money. Ms. Angelo's recommendation to redirect county matching funds while attempting to resolve a near-term shortage should, would have a longer-term effect on the costing the county tax revenue many times what is actually saved. Equally important would be the negative impact on county lodging facilities, their supporting businesses, and their employees. Given the current tough economic climate, particularly the skyrocketing cost of gasoline with its corresponding negative impact on travel, we on the Republican Central Committee believe that 2011-12 is not the time to reduce county promotion activities. With other counties and regions of the state competing even more aggressively for a shrinking pool of business and tourist dollars, redirecting the county matching funds from the bid at this time would be myopic, unwise, and a false economy. That's the text of my letter that I wrote to you. I believe each of you have a copy. I'd offer one additional comment, and that is, the role of government is not to create jobs, it is to provide an environment in which jobs can be created. Redirecting the $300,000 county matching funds is not providing that environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan.
Madam Chair.
Oh, we have a comment. Supervisor Hamburg?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Madam Chair, I've just heard many times over the past couple of weeks that, that the CEO recommended that we remove this item from the 11-12 budget. That is not true. She did not recommend it.
It was identified as a potential.
She put it forward as something for the Board of Supervisors to consider. So I just want that onus to be taken off of the CEO. It's her job to put before us possibilities for how we can reach a balanced budget.
We stand corrected.
Thank you.
To that point, what the CEO did was bring forward non-mandated services that draw on the general fund, and they were on a list. And I concur with Supervisor Hamburg, that would be your job to bring us all the potentials for saving. So I think that that explains it.
Okay.
Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I just want to reiterate that fact. You know, I think that's unfair criticism of our CEO and the CEO staff. You know, the main reason that we hired our present CEO is we wanted somebody that would bring us forth ideas. Some of them is recommendations, some of them were just ideas on a list. You know, that was the main reason we hired Carmel Angelo is for that. And she's done a remarkable job at doing that, and she's received considerable amount of criticism. But I think if you look at Mendocino County's finances compared to some of our neighbors, we're in a lot better shape. And it's probably 90% because we have an active CEO and an active CEO staff that's doing that. So I'm going to totally stick up for our staff and what it's done. And I understand where you're coming from, but this is the board that makes decisions. Our CEO and CEO makes the recommendations, they're putting ideas on a list. But I want to encourage our CEO and our CEO staff to keep bringing forward ideas and lists of where we can save money and whatnot. And it's ultimately up to this board to say yes or no.
No, I recognize the criticism is well-taken for my choice of words. I have all the respect in the world for the, for the job that Ms. Angelo is doing, because she's got a tough job. And she's doing your, basically, she's following your direction. But I'm just noting that we don't, we think it's a poor, we'd rather see the money stay.
Thank you. Nancy Kleiber?
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Kleiber, and I'm here today representing the Mendocino Music Festival. You can tell from the button. And the music festival is, has become, from its very modest beginnings, has become an important and vibrant part of Mendocino's, not only Mendocino's cultural, cultural life, but also its economic life. And I'm proud to say that the Mendocino Music Festival is celebrating its 25th season this year. And we plan on thriving for many years to come. But to do that, we need Visit Mendocino. That organization has continued, has played an important role, a very important role in our success. We highly value and very much rely on Scott Schneider and his colleagues at Visit Mendocino. And as our, for their tremendous advice and consultation that they provide to us, and as our county faces a huge budget shortfall and painful cuts to jobs and services, we believe that tourism and travel are key factors in the flow of money into this county. The music festival last year, in spite of the gruesome economic situation, attracted 8,500 ticketed attendees. That's, doesn't count the performers and their families who came to the music festival in July. Forty percent of those attendees were from out of the county. The festival alone pumped over a quarter of a million dollars directly into the county's economy. And that doesn't count all of the money that the tourists spent, those 4,000 out-of-county attendees spent for lodging, for retail, at restaurants. Now, we urge you to support the bid and to match the funds needed to keep Visit Mendocino going at full capacity. On our own, we haven't been able to sufficiently and effectively reach target audiences in Sacramento and the Bay Area. Still, 60% of, close to 60% of our attendees are local. And it is our goal to increase the attendance from out of the area. And we have been doing that. And Visit Mendocino has helped us to reach target audiences by featuring us on its website, putting us in touch with travel writers who visit the county, consulting and advising us on the most effective ways to promote our concerts and events, and has helped us enter the age of social media, which we know what effect that can have. Just look at, look at the Middle East. So we want to, we want to encourage you-
Now, don't try to start something.
We're not going to overthrow the Board of Supervisors. But we do want to provide cultural and economic input to the county, and we need Visit Mendocino to help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy, I understand you're buying a tent.
We have a tent!
All right. Alyssa Mweir, followed by Jeff Stanford.
Thank you. Alyssa Mweir, Arts Council of Mendocino County. Good afternoon. I'm here today on behalf of the Arts Council to voice our support for Visit Mendocino County and the county museum. You've heard a lot of statistics and data today, making a strong case for arts and culture, and the powerful engine of economic development that is Visit Mendocino County. But we artists like to speak in metaphor. We use poetry to describe the human condition and to reflect upon our divergent, as well as our shared perspectives. So here's a metaphor. We live in a small town, and these are our neighbors. Like the proverbial neighbor showing up for a barn raising, Visit Mendocino County is helping the Arts Council promote arts organizations, not only within the county, but far beyond. For example, at their upcoming Taste of Mendocino event in San Francisco, where together we can effectively market the county's attributes and reach our tiered demographic. Meanwhile, the Arts Council is building the county museum and nine other organizations' new websites. We bring unique and inspired art instruction to children in Mendocino County schools. Here's another metaphor. We live in a healthy ecosystem, exhibiting symbiosis, sustainable growth, and the efficient and waste-free use of resources. Loss of funding in this environment would be an act of devastation and waste. It would take years to rebuild these organizations to reach their current high levels of performance. To solve any problem, analysis is crucial, but as any scientist will tell you, so is creativity. It is the creative mind that perceives the larger truth and rejects common assumptions and short-sighted mistakes. We use our imaginations to visualize actions and their consequences. To envision a Mendocino County without the museum, without Visit Mendocino, without the Arts Council for that matter, is to imagine a darker place, a community out of balance, crucial ingredients missing, collaborations lost. I highly commend this board for taking a values-based approach to the county budget. I am certain that using both analysis and visualization, you will see that sustainability and health of the county as a whole demands that the crucial services provided by arts organizations and the county promotional alliance remain in place. Supporting these organizations is a responsible thing to do, and translates into job creation, increased revenue, and improved quality of life throughout our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Stanford, followed by Ruth Sparks.
Well, this, I guess, is my sixth time up here. As a former opponent of the bid, I've spoken to the board every time. It's amazing what has happened. First of all, you have one of the leaders in the state in tourism, and that is Scott Schneider. He's here. I truly believe, and I have a lot of knowledge in promotion at the state level, that he would be getting twice the money if he saw fit to leave here. We're very lucky. One of the things, I didn't support the bid because I was afraid that there'd be some kind of infighting that Dan has heard. And there is some of that going on. And so I insisted, over a long period of time, that we'd be research-based. And Scott definitely bought into it, and we are research-based. That is why it works. It works because we do what people that are experts tell us to do. And we do it, we stick with that research, and that MCLA and MCPA both vote and also comment on that research to, you know, direct it so that it works. I feel that it's ridiculous for us to have to defend this thing. For him to have to defend the 10% requirement, which was totally verbal, but the fact is, is that we were paying $75 an hour to Ozone, which was a media company in San Francisco, to place ads that we can place for $15 an hour here. First of all, somebody's getting $15 an hour, and we're not paying that horrendous premium by having to pay all these other people to do it. By bringing this stuff onboard in Mendocino County, we have saved the county, and we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in six years. But more than that, we've been able to invest that in PR, which is extremely important, and media. And these specious arguments that are coming from an I-know-where, need to be, you need to ask the right questions back to Adam. What exactly is that so-called administrative money being spent on? It's not being spent on anything that we weren't having to pay somebody else to do in another city, in another county. I just think you really need to understand that. Now, the other thing is, this works. And you can- And you can tell that it works because of his stature in the county and because of the county's stature in the, not the United States, but in California, with regard to rural tourism, agricultural tourism, and other areas. We are doing an outstanding job. And I urge your support, I'd urge you to contribute more money, but you've got the hardest job in this county. My job is easy, because I'm trying to always come up with new stuff to bring guests in, and it works. But you guys have to keep the budget balanced. But lodging and all the arts organizations, by their thriving, are bringing in tax dollars, lots of tax dollars, to support you. And I thank you for your continued support. I can't imagine you would make a mistake. I'm sure that you will continue to support us, but also support us when you get these challenges. Call me, and I'll explain to you what's going on. There's no reason for you to put up with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ruth Sparks, please. Followed by Howa Gagnant.
Hi there. I'm Ruth Sparks, and right now I'm representing Heritage Days of Mendocino County. I'm going to reverse my statement because I want to repeat what Jeff said. It works. It has worked for Heritage Days. Heritage Days started as a little community celebration in Mendocino, and it stretched along the coast. And then last year, the Lodging Association, after we appeared many times pleading for funding from you also, thank you very much, you contributed to that funding, they allowed us five thousand dollars last year. I used in a letter the word parsimonious. Believe me, the Lodging Association spends that money very carefully. And this year, we're expanding more. It's an exciting thing. It brings heritage visitors to our county. And I just urge you to consider carefully, because without this funding, Heritage Days cannot continue. And I also thank the staff for their encouragement and support. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Howa Gagnant, followed by Joe Bradley.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, I come to you hat in hand, asking for your support for the bid. I was just visiting with you in another chamber on the subject of the museum. And while there, I noticed something. There are five posters on the wall. Three of those have to do with Willett's, my hometown. Four of them have to do with the Skunk Train, and all five of them have to do with tourism. And they are all artistic expressions of our county. These are the images that draw people into the county, and these are the images they take away, and these are why they spend their money. As you sit on the dais, you see images of our county all around you. These are artistic expressions. And again, these vineyards, seascapes, forests, works of man in this county are why people come here. Your own great seal, one hundred and sixty years old there, made of natural woods of this county, depicts the wine waves and wilderness that are the theme of tourism promotion in this county. Now, you've heard that we once had a publicity firm in San Francisco, and we were lost in the ozone at that time. Perhaps I'm stretching things just a little bit. But when I came on the board of the MCPA some three years ago, and this is to Mr. Hamburg, who counted fifty-one board members, I counted ninety-one board members of the various associations that were trying to work together with all their mixed agendas and cross purposes. And Scott and I had a rather forceful visit very early on, and I said, "Scott, this is too cumbersome. We have to have something a little different." We found support from Mr. Stanford, who is certainly one of the more forceful speakers you're going to hear today, and other board members, and eventually, Visit Mendocino County was born. That is an efficient organization. I'm proud to be the chairman of that thing. And what it does, it cannot be described in any other way than it's doing a hundred and ten percent, to borrow another metaphor. Scott doesn't just come to work, punch the clock. He's on this job twenty-four hours a day. He dreams about this stuff, I'm sure of it. And as far as information coming to this board on a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five basis, please just get in touch with Steve Donnacliff. He gets the copies of everything we do, and you can very easily keep up with what we're doing. Steve's got it. He's got his fingers on the pulse. The CEO has the fingers on the pulse. And just ask Jeff if you want anything more.
Thank you. Joe Bradley, followed by Glennon Blake.
Hi, I'm Joe Bradley. I guess you guys should get tired of seeing all our faces, but again, this is my sixth year dealing with the bid and MCLA. And as I've been listening today, I wrote a few notes, and there's a few things that I think are really important to Mr. Hamburg. The information or the questions that you've received in the last week or two, I have a concern that you should be getting these questions anytime, not just at this point. But one of it, one of the things that I find is perception, just like the misunderstanding with Ms. Angelo, it's perception and how people hear things. The other thing is, what I'm finding is, a bad economy breeds fear, and then breeds finger-pointing, because people are at a loss. And we've already, that I know of, have lost five lodging properties in the, on the coast. And that's scary, when you're seeing, in my case, my, I've had to lower room rates, and I'm lucky if my occupancy has stayed at the same place it was, which is the lowest occupancy I've had in twelve and a half years of inkeeping. The other thing to remind you of is with the bid and the match. Because the bid is tied to the match in the ordinance that we practice under, if the match is pulled, then the bid goes down the drain. And you will see, where we have had a minimal loss of TOT dollars compared to our neighbors, we will see a more drastic loss and possibly loss of more businesses. When we did contract outside the county, you've heard the ozone jokes, they also, what we did not realize, and it wasn't in the contract, was they took another fifteen percent off the top. Anything they bought us, they then took fifteen percent. And when we realized what was going on, we were told, "Oh, that's regular practice." And we all went, "We don't need that regular practice. We need the money to go to what we're mandated to do." The other thing is, you as a board and the people that work with you are always invited to our meetings. When we were relatively new, we did have supervisors come visit. Mr. McGowan, when you were on the City Council, you came to visit, and other ones of you have. But also, this year, as a member of the Advisory Board, we had two out of our meetings here this year in this building. And we were right here, and it doesn't happen on a Tuesday. So it would be nice to have you guys visit if you want to see how it works. I think that would be a really good education, because these are people that you don't hear all the time, as opposed to me, or Scott, or Jeff. The other thing is, personally, from my own point of view, I just got written up in The Washington Post last Sunday. I didn't even know that was coming. That was something, one of my promotions got picked up by our PR firm, and it ended up in Washington. And I've been in The Washington Post before, years ago, by serendipity, and it brought me money. So my money is then shared with you. So I think cutting this off would be economic short-sightedness, for the lack of any other terms. And I definitely appreciate the partnership that we've managed to accomplish in six years, and I'd like to see that continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Glennon Blake, followed by Tim Thornhill.
Thank you, and good afternoon again. I'm taking off my MTA hat and putting on my MCPA hat and my Visit Mendocino hat. Currently, I am the Chair of Mendocino County Promotional Alliance, and I would just like to say it's a vital organization. Sometime, it's a pass-through organization, but politically, it's very, very important. And I also have to say that I've lived in Mendocino County now for almost thirty-five years, and for that entire time, I have been involved in some entity of tourism. It's a passion for me. It's very important. It's a wonderful economic development for our county. I love people to come here, drop their money, and leave. And I also have to say, during the last several years, Supervisor McGowan's exactly right. There was a lot of dissension. I've been through it myself. I've seen it evolve. So I was also, how long I've been around, people call me the gray beard of the tourism industry. I don't think that was very flattering, but I have been here a long time, and I can tell you, the positive work that is being done now is just remarkable. And I would love, it really is vital for this economy in this times to keep it going as strongly as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Thornhill.
My name is Tim Thornhill, and Good Day County Council, CEO, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity. I won't need my three minutes, and I left my hat in my chair. I do sit on the MWWC board, I sit on the VMC board, I think I used to be on the MCPA board, and I, I think there's probably three others that I'm not recalling immediately. I will tell you that the VMC board is the most functional and productive board I've encountered in my time in Mendocino County. For that, I commend the entire group of, whether it's ninety or a hundred people who have probably contributed to this organization one way or another. I'll also commend the Board of Supervisors, because I'm going to guess that the majority of y'all were involved in the Mendocino County Joint Tourism and Agricultural Market and Promotion Feasibility Study performed back in nineteen ninety-eight, of which y'all all paid good money for. I always try to base decisions on data rather than emotion. There's a sign on the wall in my office that says, "In God I trust, all others bring data." I want to tell you that what you're doing is you're maximizing your existing resources while protecting the environment of your agricultural community. Those are the reasons I came here. I'm a businessman here, I'm well-invested here, I'm watching things grow. I think you have three times the number of wineries that you had five or six years ago. I do believe I'm hearing that you're headed in the right direction. I will thank you in advance for protecting and supporting VMC. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann McGee. And if there are any other speakers that would like to come forward, please have a form ready and bring it to the clerk. We won't shoot you.
Depends on what she says. I'm also a messenger of kind of a different group. My name is Mary Ann McGee. I'm the Resource Development Director for Mendocino Coast Clinics. We serve over eighty-four hundred people on the coast, providing over forty-four thousand medical, dental, and behavioral health visits a year. You may remember, we have also suffered over the years, both state and county cuts to our budgets. And one of the ways we've been able to supplement our income is through our Crab and Wine Days events, which actually originated twelve years ago through the generosity of MCP. Was MCPA then? Yes, I get mixed up, too, with all these. So in the last five years, we have really grown. We have, in the last five years, grossed over three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars with these events, and much of that is due to the partnership with VMC and what they bring to our table. This year, we raised eighty-five thousand dollars, which will give us a net of sixty-one thousand dollars to add to the two hundred thousand dollars we need for the two-point-five million dollars that the federal government is giving us to expand our health clinics. So that's the first big chunk for that, and we're pretty excited about that. What VMC brings to our table is particularly promotions. They promote in ways we could never, ever afford to and reach people that we could not reach. Eighty-two percent of our pre-sales this year came from out-of-towners, and it was very evident with the new Berkeley billboard that we reached a whole new group of people from Berkeley and Oakland, as we've not had people from those areas before. So that's been great. The other thing they do is they recruit and they bring the celebrity judges for the Crab Cake Cook-Off and Wine Tasting Competition. And these are high-profile magazines now. Oprah Magazine, who last summer afterwards did a two-page spread on Ravens at Stanford Inn. Better Homes and Gardens, Coastal Living, Family Circle, Ladies' Home Journal, these are all national, big-time magazines. And rumor has it that this next year, that both Martha Stewart and Rachel Ray magazines are interested in coming and participating. And all these people afterwards write about it, blog about it. The promotions that come out of that are fabulous for this county, and they're nationwide. So we couldn't do this without them. They have become fabulous partners, collaborative, cooperative, and we just could not attain this level of success with our fundraising without this partnership. And so we implore you to continue to support the bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Dickerson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Heidi Cusick-Dickerson. I'm speaking as a resident of Mendocino County, as a longtime resident, and as somebody who, in most of my long adult life, has had to make my living in this county, and as somebody who is always working hard to figure out ways to develop the economy here. So I just wanted to give a real quick historical perspective on the promotional efforts of Mendocino County. In nineteen ninety-six, the Board of Supervisors wanted to raise the bed tax in the county and failed, couldn't do it by themselves. So some of the board members came to the Mendocino Wine Growers Alliance at the time and said, "We need your help." And so the wine growers, along with members of the lodging establishments, who were not organized yet, the Chambers of Commerce, and a variety of other entities in the county, put together forty thousand dollars and helped pass in nineteen ninety-seven Measure G, which started the, which did raise the bed tax, with the caveat that a portion of that would be used for promotional efforts. I was fortunate enough for five years to work for the Mendocino County Promotional Alliance. I was Director of Events and Marketing and brought lots of media to the county. I created the Wine and Mushroom Fest, the Crab and Wine Days, which I hope you've seen the brochures that are coming out now. I mean, these are successful events that come in the down season. And one of the reasons that we wanted to get this promotional alliance to promote tourism in the county was that, the study was done that found that if we could keep half the grapes in Mendocino County and make them into wine, and increase bed occupancy by, I don't know, it's like ten or fifteen percent, we could fill the gap in the decline of the economy caused by the demise of timber and logging, timber and fishing. So it's been a really up-and-down battle. In those first five years, the county had some financial difficulties, so the funding kept going back and forth. And the lodging people said, they had organized, but then formed the Lodging Association, and they didn't want that to happen. They wanted a sustained source of income. And they decided to assess themselves and form this bid and keep this promotional effort going. So I'm just here to say, you know, I thank you so much for your support for all these years, and I really urge you to continue supporting this as a commitment that the county made to constituents and because of successful economic development program. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Seward would be our last speaker.
My name's Jennifer Seward, and I am here on behalf of the, I'm one of the board members for MCPA. And I became part of the organization because they had a transitional period about five years ago, and it just seemed like a really great place to spend my volunteer time, which is obviously very limited. And I have to say, it is so impressive what they managed to do with the amount of money that they have. And not only just for certain organizations, they've reached across multiple organizations to make sure there are not duplications in advertising efforts. And with the Chambers, I'm a past president- And with the chambers, I'm a past president of the Chamber, the Greater Ukiah Chamber of Commerce, it is so impressive that they reach out to each corner of our county and work with everybody who's willing to come through the door, and even those takes a little bit of time to come through the door, but be patient and willing to work with us. So, I feel like this money is definitely well-spent, and I know that times are very difficult right now, but the return is great. And if there are concerns, then yes, definitely, have them speak to staff. I mean, they're great there, they're all the time, and they're very responsive, I'll guarantee you that, that's for sure. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So, we'll return to the board for discussions and comments. Supervisor Hamburg.
Madam Chair, when you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to offer one.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Mendocino County Lodging Business Improvement District Annual Report, that we adopt the resolution declaring the intention of the board to levy and collect an assessment from lodging businesses in the Business Improvement District within the boundaries of the unincorporated portion of the County of Mendocino and the incorporated areas of the City of Fort Bragg, Point Arena, Ukiah, and Willets. And then, I further move that the Board of Supervisors schedule a public hearing for March 22, 2011, for the purpose of levying the proposed assessment. No, we don't need that?
It's included in the resolution.
It's in there.
Oops. Okay, scratch that.
Second.
It's in there.
And I've got a comment also.
Okay, so then we're going to go to board comments. I haven't made any comments yet. You are next, Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, not only do we have a real success story here that is, you know, making very effective use of the funds, the really limited amount of funds that they have, but, you know, as to the issue of the 10 percent administration, well, I think we're probably spending pretty close to zero on administration, you know? It probably boils down to paying a phone bill or something, because I think the time that Scott devotes to this is not administration, it's marketing, and that's proven by the relationships that you've built. I've been to a couple of events that Visit Mendocino County put on in the last year where they've invited travel writers and other industry leaders from around the state and beyond, and it's really a testimony to the work they're doing. One more point I want to make, there's another big contribution to the success of all of this, and that's the people in the promotional, the lodging industry themselves, and the contributions that they make. And I know that many of the lodging owners make rooms available at either no or low cost. A lot of the restaurateurs make contributions to make these events successful. I see the Chief Skunk, Robert Pennoli, back there, who runs the railroad, and he very generously has donated excursions to make these things work, and so it's really a team effort by everybody, and you're all doing a great job. And it's one of the few things, I mean, we just talked about a public-private partnership a little while ago, well, this is one that is really up and running and working, and one of the few things, bringing money into the county.
Supervisor Pinches.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say that this may be the most successful public-private partnership that we have in this county, and I'm not certainly, I'm not going to kill the goose that lays the golden egg, and this is certainly that situation. Although, I will say, you know, with all these issuance of money and whatnot, we are leaving our CEO and this board with less options when it comes with our budget. I just remon, you know, it comes with its, it's nice to say, "Yeah, we're going to give you $300,000," but I'm thinking, "Yeah, but do we really have $300,000 to give?" So, but we'll have to deal with that. Government's good about putting that decision off till tomorrow. But, I want to take this opportunity, because I got a lot, there's a lot of in and lodging operators and owners out here, and you have cousins or business partners or whatnot being interested. We need a new motel in Latanville desperately, especially with Willis bypass coming. So, if you know anybody, there's a great opportunity. I would guarantee it would be the busiest motel on the Highway 101, because with the Willis bypass, so.
Especially during bad weather.
I'm using my couple minutes here to put out a cheap form of advertisement here. So, please, if you know anybody that's interested, interest rates are down, it's a great opportunity to invest in Mendocino County. Not only that, not only the TOT would gather, it'd be a great increase in our assessed evaluation, too.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
And we have a couple of great locations.
I purposely kept quiet on this. Historically, since 1990, maybe, I think it was '89, actually, '88, '89, that I worked on promotion, and through the efforts through the years, this is what it has evolved to. Yes, there was dissension, there were people that were unhappy with different things through the years, but we did work through that. I think we have, what we have today, I think is really working. I'm very impressed. It's fun to listen to KGO, especially on Saturday or Sunday and all the promotions. When you start talking about one speaker, the Crab and Mushroom Fest, I immediately thought of Heidi, and her efforts that went forward on that effort, and it has paid off. We were really worried the first year, second year, that it wouldn't, but it has. And I'm tired of being asked, as a supervisor, "What are you doing for economic development?" And, you know, they want you to say, "Well, you know, I've done this and that," but you have done it for us, and at $300,000, I think it's very, it's a small amount for the work that gets done, and I know I'm really appreciative, and I think it's really paid off for this county. Thank you.
Scott, I have a question for you. In terms of the, this is back to, sort of back to the basics, in terms of the actual dollar amount, because this is a 50 percent match, what's the highest amount that it has been, in terms of the county's match?
Well, the, in the, I think it was in 2007 and '08, we brought in $616,000, so the match would have been 313.
So, that was, it's.
And the lowest was last year, and we brought in about $590,000, so it was $295,000. So, it's, it hasn't changed that much.
Go ahead.
And, sorry, you also get 1 percent as an administrative fee, so it's actually $294,000.
Right.
Chair Smith, and I just, just to add to that statement, I think the very first year, we had the Promotional Alliance, it was something like $100,000 or $105,000, can't remember exactly that amount, I think there's some people here that would, but you think of, and we thought, "Oh, my gosh, this is great," and, but it's even more wonderful to have what you have today.
Well, when I first got on the board, we went through a lot of, there was a lot of volatility about the issue, and I was on, I was on the ad hoc committee that worked to form the bid, and we went through the whole sort of tortured history of promotions in Mendocino County, going back the prior 10 or 12 years before that, from, you know, where there were act, you know, in the sense of, and I think as Heidi Dickerson addressed sort of this, the concept of some broken promises, that we had support, and then there was a sense that the board at that time didn't follow through. There were, I remember a $200,000 figure at one point, down to a zero, there were some years where the board didn't contribute anything. So, the sense was, if you have the bid, you take out that volatility, and I was very happy to serve on it, and it really educated me about the tourism industry in Mendocino County, and it grew my understanding of the lodging industry, the wine industry, the culinary components, all the various components, and I was, I was, it was a lot of work, and there was a sense that, boy, we just don't know if we're going to be able to pull this off. And I remember meetings on the coast, and meetings in Willets, and meetings in Hopland, that, you know, it was very touch and go, if there would be unified support amongst the lodging entities, as diverse as they were in the county, that this would actually, this vote would go through in all the separate locales. So, it was a really challenging concept at the time, and there was a lot of work done by a lot of individuals, but just a few more comments, I think, since then, Scott, I think we see with your leadership that there has really been a growth in the collaboration, and the arts have been pulled in a lot more. I think there's been a concerted effort to deal with agricultural and nature tourism. There've been just a lot, I think it's really grown in the sense of its, of perspective and the diversity of Mendocino County, and what a key component that is to market to the larger audience. And I really want to echo the comments of Jeff Stamford on that key piece about it being research-based, and I think that is very, very important, and I think that lends credibility to the process. I was contacted, I think it was maybe two years or so, by the marketing firm that did the analysis for Mendocino County, and was asked to be interviewed as a stakeholder, then asked to participate in some of the discussions on, well, where do we go next? And it was, you know, again, that was research-based, like, it wasn't just the opinions of a few people sitting around the table, it was, what does real research show? And I remember running into, because I was up at Confusion Hill, they send out people that they, you know, that you don't know they're from a research firm, and it just turned out that the day I was up there with some of the county staff, they happened to be visiting the Confusion Hill Tourism Site, and what, they sort of had a fondness for it, and they talked about, it had, there was a real marketing niche for something like Confusion Hill in Mendocino County. So, they were not just focusing on the coast, they were doing it county-wide, and it was interesting that we just happened to run into those folks, they were sort of going undercover in the tourism industry in Mendocino County at the time. So, that information was carried on to actually do a lot of your planning, and I think that very key component that, of being research-based is really, is an important position that you have, and I think it lends, it does lend credibility. So, I thank all of you for your leadership and your contributions, and we're going to go to a vote after Supervisor Hamburg.
Yeah, I think we've almost reached that point in the discussion where everything's been said, but not everyone has said it. So, trying to be the one that wraps up this discussion, I just want to bring up two numbers. One is roughly $330 million, which is about what the tourism economy, what that part of the economy means to the overall Mendocino County economy, which makes it far and away the largest legal part of our economy. And it's a very significant, significant amount of money. And finally, I just want to comment that I really don't look at this as a contribution from the County of Mendocino to the tourism industry, because when you look at what is generated, leaving aside, as Scott said, the sales tax and other things that tourists who come here buy, if you just look at the 3.4 million of TOT, and you add to that the $300,000 from the BID, that's 3.7 million. So, really, what the county is contributing is about 8 percent of that back to the industry. So, to me, that's not, that's not Mendocino County making a contribution to you, that's a small percentage of what you contribute coming back to your industry. So, with that, Madam Chair, maybe we could vote?
Call the question, then. Yes.
I'll call the question.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously.
And we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene.
There's some tourists out there on the road.
It's true.
8C.
8C, thank you Supervisor. Brown.
Yeah.
I was still on our last agenda topic. So, we are going on to Item 8C, and this is a discussion on possible action regarding update on steep mandated process of developing a final plan to adjust supervisory district boundaries for the County of Mendocino. And this is brought forward by a number of county staff, and we will go to County Council to introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given it the hour, I will speed this up, but we wanted to bring you an update on and get some direction from the board regarding this redistricting process that we have to engage in this year. You have my agenda summary in front of you. What we want, would like direction from the board today on is what would you like to do with respect to the establishment of the Advisory Committee? It's our recommendation that the Advisory Committee be comprised of the staff members indicated on the agenda summary, with the inclusion of the Women League of Voters, a representative or two from that organization, and if the board chooses to add any other folks to the committee, that's up to you. I would just caution you that we don't want to have a committee that is too cumbersome for this process. Then, in addition to the establishment of the Advisory Committee, I have identified all of the steps that we're going to need to take throughout the year to complete this process, and the next step would be, once the census information is released, we would put this matter on the board agenda to have board, the board give comment regarding the census information and your concerns or your specific issues regarding the information and direction on that. And then, we would also request that you authorize the committee to conduct community meetings once the census information has been released, and all of the other items that I've listed on this agenda summary. So, with that, I'm here for questions, and also with me is the Assessor Clerk and Recorder, Sue Ranacek.
Counsel, just, I do understand it is a late hour, but I still think this is a very, very important topic, and we have citizens who've actually been here for the majority of the day, I think, for this topic. I think it still would be just important for you to offer just a few sentences because of your familiarity with the task at hand in the Election Code Section, or it would go to Ms. Ranacek. Just to give us a little background of why we're doing this, what we're doing, why we're required, just a quick synopsis of it.
Well, this process is governed by Elections Code Section 21-500, which requires us to, following each dicennial federal census and using the census as the basis, the Board of Supervisors has to consider adjustment of the boundaries. We are required to do this task no later than November 1 of 2011 this year, where the board is going to be required to hold a public hearing on any boundary proposal prior to another public hearing in which the board votes to approve or defeat the proposal. The code allows the board to appoint an Advisory Committee, and we're recommending that you do so. And, again, the census information is expected sometime at the end of March or the 1st of April, so once we have that information, then the timeframes, you know, kick into action, and we're going to have to have, you know, the public hearing to adopt a plan no later than August 23 of 2011, so.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Ranacek, would you like to comment further?
I just wanted to say that it's required, the census data is required to be dispersed.
Fix your speaker, push it up.
The census data is required to be dispersed by March 31.
Okay. Supervisor Hamburg.
What have we done in the past? What did we do, what did we do last time?
The exact same process we're recommending.
Do we appoint a CAC?
Yes, you did.
And do we use?
You appointed a committee that was comprised of county staff, and basically, essentially the same staff that we have listed here, and the Women League of Voters was on that committee, and that was all, that was the CAC.
And did the League have an inland chapter then? Because I believe it doesn't now.
Yes, it does not.
It does not now. And how many members were on the committee last time?
Excuse me Supervisor Hamburg.
Was it the same five staff plus five CAC members?
There was no League of Women Voter Staff on the last one in 2000.
So, was it 10?
It wasn't, they were on in 1990.
Okay, but was it, so was it these five staff members that we're looking at now, plus, plus an appointee by each board member?
No, it was just these five staff members.
Oh, just those five?
Yes. No, and I do not recommend. No, and I do not recommend, in fact, it would be inappropriate for each member, board member to appoint an individual to represent that particular board member. If you want to add additional citizens to the committee, I would suggest that you look at organizations and have the organizations submit names, and then you pick from that.
Okay, Supervisor Pinches.
So who ultimately makes the picks, and if you say the supervisors wouldn't, shouldn't make recommendations, who, are we going to give that authority to you or to you or to anybody else?
No, 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 you can make, if you choose to add citizens to the Advisory Committee in addition to the staff, my suggestion is that you not each individually select somebody, but that you would have names submitted and that the board, the majority of the board would vote on adding additional folks to the committee. It wouldn't come from you individually.
Madam Chair, first of all, I really feel there needs to be some changes, and I realize that you have to balance the precinct amounts to have the amount of voters pretty well equal in every supervisory district.
Excuse me Supervisor Pinches, this has to do with population, has nothing to do with registered voters.
Yeah, but to readjust, to readjust like the supervisory districts.
It's strictly by population, not registered voters.
Strictly by, okay. But anyways, that creates, so, you know, I guess my main, one of my main points here is to have like the 5th District stretched from the top of Ridgewood to Walala is totally, it's really hard, not on just the voting side, but it's really hard for, like Dan, that's a hard area to represent when you're, you know, just the geography restraints and the physical ability to represent that huge an area. I mean, I've always advocated that the district lines should be based on an east-west axis instead of a north-south axis, which we've, every year, every 10 years, it's basically add or subtract from the north-south axis. I think it should be based on an east-west axis. But more important than that, I don't have no problem with this member, this committee member that you're talking about. The only problem I have with it is if you look at that, every person on there is basically from right here in Ukiah Valley. I think we need some more diversity on this citizens committee of the whole county to represent some of these ideas that I bring up.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. You definitely need your staff on the committee.
I understand that, I understand that, but I want it expanded, I want some representation from the rural areas of the county to, because I really think there needs to be some significant changes on how the boundary lines are drawn for the reasons. If you put it on an east-west axis, then you would give more representation and maybe get away from this coastal versus inland issue, maybe you would have three coastal supervisors that met the coast, and maybe you would have they stretch all the way to represent the Mendocino National Forest, which is the whole eastern side of this county. So if we basically change it from a north-south axis to an east-west axis, I think it would be better district areas to represent and give better representation of all of the major aspects of this county. And that has never been done in the history of this county.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Chair Smith. I think in, after the census in 1990, there were huge changes made by a committee of that time. That was formed, and I know Potter Valley, for instance, where I live, went out of the 3rd into the 1st. And when you say the history of the county, I think that these districts have historically changed, certainly not every 10 years, but there's other criteria besides just what you're saying that you have to put together, like minority blocks, I, you know, there's a whole list of criteria that has to be met, and I don't know if, you know, that became law just prior to 1990, but certainly there's a whole checkbox that you have to consider, and they did consider that when they made the big changes in, I believe it was 1992, 93. So many times you would like to think that it's just straightforward, and it truly isn't, and until that criteria comes out, whatever committee has to digest it, and look at much more criteria than just what you're suggesting.
Well, Leightonville in my history has always been kind of the pawn. One 10-year period, it was put in the coastal district, and another time it was put in the Par Valley District. It seems to be in the history, Leightonville always been the area of, well, we can throw it this way or throw it that way. No other area of the county was looked at, you know, and, but I just, when you really look at the situation, to have the 5th District go all the way from Walala to the top of Ridgewood, I mean, that is, I don't think that's, I mean, that's more representative of the whole county and not just the 5th District, but just the physical part of a supervisor representing that area and going to meetings in all them different areas and whatnot, you know, it's almost physically impossible.
But it was the least populated of the districts back in 2001, so I'm just stating a fact that there's more criteria.
I'd just like to see the committee may have a little more broad representation than just basically people that live right here in Ukiah Valley.
Well, you're right, geography is one of the considerations, along with community of interest and that sort of thing, so we don't have a problem with that, we just need to get the process going so that we're ready when the census information is released.
Supervisor McCown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with all due respect, I don't think it's just the 3rd District or Leightonville that gets tossed around. The City of Ukiah, I think, could give you a run for your money, because at times, the City of Ukiah's been divided up between the 1st and 2nd Districts. Then at some point, I think around 1990, the decision was made, let's try and isolate the Ukiah virus and confine it all to one district if we can, which then you wind up with some very odd configurations, frankly, where we bump up with the 1st District and also the 5th. But, you know, I think all these different issues are something that ought to be discussed openly, and I think a Citizens Advisory Committee would be the best way to do that. I think that rather than have a committee dominated by staff, I think we should have a committee and then have staff to the committee. You know, the role of the committee members identified here are really staff to provide information, I think.
What if I just threw out, say like the fire chiefs of all the fire districts? Just as an idea, they're scattered throughout the county, they're pretty, all knowledgeable people.
Well, you'd have 15 votes in the 5th District.
Well, two, I mean, obviously there are many ways that this could be.
I'm just trying to think of a group that we.
Well, for instance, in 1990, or after the 1990 census, they had the Chairman of the Planning Commission, and that was just for instance.
Well, I want more than one representing.
Yes, and they had League of Women Voters, both coastal and inland, so there was, you know, diversity among that particular committee. I don't know of anyone in the public here that wishes to speak would have better suggestions, but I'd sure like to hear what public comment is.
Well, I just throw that out there, because I don't know how many fire chiefs are, but there's quite a few, and if you had a meeting, probably all of them wouldn't show up anyway, but it gives you a pretty good sprinkle of the whole county, and I don't care, you're right, there's more of them in the 50, that don't concern me, but I think it gives you broad, and it's already an organized group, I mean, it's not a committee, you got it, you're not naming any specific names, just who happens to be the fire chief of this fire district and that fire district, just an example.
Yeah, again, I just caution you on the size of the committee, and, you know, we don't want it to be a real cumbersome process for everyone, because there is a lot of work that has to get done in a relatively short period of time.
Well, I believe that we need to seriously consider the committee's recommendation before us, otherwise I think we're going to have to have this back before us again. If we're going to veer from what their recommendations are, I think that there would be a citizenry that would want to be informed that a committee was being formed, and that we would need to have a process of how we would select these probably really very limited slots. So I would say that if we don't move forward with your recommendation, counsel, the committee's recommendation, I believe it is, I think we're going to need to have a more substantive and more lengthy discussion, it's probably not going to be tonight, it's 5:30. So I support, I believe, what your recommendation is to date, which would be, I would encourage two members of the League of Women Voters, and that would encourage some coastal participation that, as Supervisor Pinches is saying, we certainly don't have in the list before us in terms of staff, but I don't, I don't, I don't believe that the staff listed here can't represent a broad perspective with how these delineations occur, so.
Well, all staff would be doing would be bringing the information, the data, so to speak, but we would, like I stated in the agenda summary, we will be holding community meetings in which we will gain input to bring to the board for your public hearing process.
And it could be, in the end, that there really are not that many changes that are really going to occur, so.
That may be.
Yeah, so let's go to public comment. Jane Pearson.
Jane Person.
Person, sorry.
Either one.
I was seeing either, but there isn't one.
Good afternoon or evening, whichever you prefer. My name is Jane Person, I'm president of this year's, this year's president, rather, of the League of Women Voters of Mendocino County, and there's only one league, by the way, it has representation from the coast as well as inland. And with me is Barbara Matheson, who is our League Action Chair, and we came to request that the board appoint two Mendocino County League members to the Advisory Committee for redistricting, and we didn't know that the County Council had already suggested representation from the league, so I guess we're here to say we'd love to. We already have one member who lives in Willets, who is willing to be a representative to this committee, and then there would be one from the coast, so that I think would answer part of your question, Mr. Pinches, as regarding the representation. But I would like to say that the league has been involved in redistricting committees all, for about 20 years. This has been a core issue for the State of California League. In fact, we were instrumental in passing Proposition 11 in 2002. Our then-president, our California League President, Janice Hirohama, signed the ballot argument for the proposition, and then 10 years ago, our Mendocino County League President, Helen Herbert, served on the committee. So we have a prior history of involvement in this, and you have two people who are very willing to become members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Any other members of the public that would wish to address the board on the topic?
Good afternoon, Lee Howard. Well, I look at this as probably being one of the most important things that our democracy is here to do, and I totally support the fact that it should be closer to what something like the state's doing today in the redistricting for the state. I don't know how many of you watched it, the amount of time and energy that's been put into it, but they started out with 100, 313 people, ended up with 18, all through a process of elimination and fairness and transparency. I think you do need a Citizens Advisory Committee, because in the past, it's done the best. Every time you can point to one of them that have worked, it's worked well. And I know that what you're hearing and saying is, you don't want to touch it with your hands, there's a way not to touch it with your hands, but we haven't done a very good PR on this one either. I'm not, I'm sorry I'm so critical of you, but this should have been, this has been known for six months, the State of California started way back in February of last year, and I'm saying, every supervisor's district asks for representation, or asks for anybody that's interested on serving on a CAC to submit their names. You put them into a hat, and you get to pull one, you get to pull one, you get to pull one, and so forth down the line, and you do get representation. If you want to throw in the League of Women Voters, throw them in too, but they're not the only ones in this community that care. The ABC Group care, and I think you should have a letter in front of you today from Farm Bureau, the Builders Exchange cares, there are people, and if you get those people that are going to give you those names, they're going to be dedicated to that process and make sure. I've watched this now, this is my third, this will be my fourth time watching this in Mendocino County. Couple times it's really been a sham, and yes, I have Dan as a supervisor and I live way out here, and he's way down there, and maybe it is east and west, but all this stuff needs to be brought to the table and worked through and taken care of, very transparent, so everybody knows what's going on. I think staff should be just that to this. Staff should be the staff, and represent, and bring, and facilitate, and everything that's asked for, but the recommendations you get from the CAC should be just that, the citizens doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals to address the board on this topic? I will return to the board.
Madam Chair, I just want to state that this is the third time it's been on the agenda. We've had this discussion.
Yes, we have, it's been postponed prior. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Chair Smith, and actually, it was a question for Mr. Howard, and the State Committee, the State Committee.
Yes, the State Redistricting Committee?
Correct, of citizens. I believe no one represents the North Coast, that none of those selected the final list, there isn't anyone on the North Coast included, is that fact?
I, I don't know, there's 18 names there, I think there is one from Napa County, you know, the attrition, the number of names that were turned in through that and the drawing of it, the interviews that had to go, you had to go through and the rest of this stuff was very cumbersome, but it, all I know is that it's, it's probably as close to being a citizens group as you can get and not have politics, and if you think, you know, we have a ream of politics here, just look at the state and see the gerrymandering, what they want to do there, so, but I'd have to go back and look on, it's on the internet, there's a whole, and they're starting their work.
Well, I did go down, and I don't include Napa as part of the North Coast, but certainly part of a region of interest, but I was surprised and I could not.
Yeah, there was a lot of people from Mendocino County, I knew, one time I saw like 13 names on there from Mendocino County, none of them were.
Well, that's a simple reason, because nobody at the state wants any of the district lines changed in this area, they got it just the way they want it.
I wouldn't know about that, Del Norte County is inland, and they're really coastal, that's a problem.
Okay, so back to the board for discussion. Are we going to take action on the issue before us? Where does the board want to go with the topic at hand?
I really think we ought to basically, I mean, I'd say, why don't we put an advertisement out there and say, hey, anybody interested in citizens, and that's a good idea that Lee came up with, pick a number, you know, use staff as what staff does, and then pick, say, odd number, say a seven-member or a 10-member, I don't care, start out, I'd like to see a larger number than a smaller number, to say, well, we don't want a large number because they can't agree on nothing or won't get along, I don't think that's true. I, I'd like to get some diverse ideas and whatnot, at least start out with a seven or 10-member, if we can, and see what, and then put the names in the hat, and if we want seven or 10, pick the first seven or 10 names out, and that's the committee, and move forward that way. That way you have a complete open process.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but I have had contact from constituents within the 1st District that basically, they're not the 1st District, they're Willets area, they're in the 3rd, and there was some faux pas that occurred in putting their district in, or putting them with, in the 1st, so I don't know, I'm hoping they're going to contact whatever committee, but is this an appropriate time, or do we wait during the hearing? And I bring forward those particular voter precincts.
Well, what the committee will do is, once the information is received, the census information, then we'll schedule another meeting with the board so that you can offer your initial input to the information, and then we'd schedule a series of community meetings where folks can, at night, or can come together and offer their information, and then it comes back to the board, so I'm thinking that's probably when it would happen, is during the community meetings.
Because they claimed, they claimed to have complained for 20 years.
But again, if you want to pick five and then have two from the Women League of Voters, and then have the staff be the staff to advise, I don't really care, it's just that we need to decide how you want to do it.
I don't care if every member of the Women League of Voters submit their name. I don't care if every member of the Women League of Voters submit their name. And then certainly, if they, if 12 people from the League of Women Voters put their name in the hat, and we're picking, say, seven, there's a good chance there's going to be one or two of them anyway. You see what I'm saying? But I just think we need to open it up to the citizenry out there and advertise a little bit and say, hey, we're going to form this committee. Are you willing to, do you want to participate? And whoever signs up and wants to participate, throw all the names in the hat, and then if we want a seven-man committee, we pick out seven, or if we want a 12-man committee, or woman, you pick out 12. Make it as simple as that, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah, that's up to you, however you want to do it.
Supervisor?
We can make it really simple.
I don't really think that it's that simple, and I don't support the idea of throwing names into a hat. Then it has to do with the pool of people that have, have come to the table. That can be very politically motivated in and of itself, just the process of getting the names into the hat.
She just said it's total, it's total, the census people, so on this process, whether you're a voter or not, you can participate, right? If it's total numbers of people, registered voters or not?
Right, it's based on population.
See, so what's wrong with throwing everybody's name in the hat?
Well, I guess I think, I just personally think we're making too much out of this, and we need to have a CAC. I think that the staff that are comprised here, they've had a series of meetings, I think they're objective thinkers, I think they come from a variety of perspectives, I think the names here are not random, they're there for very good logical reasons, and if you add the League of Women Voters, the reason I support the league being involved, because as Jane stated, they have not, not just a historical perspective within Mendocino, but it's, it's the nature and the mission of the league that I'm interested in. They try to be unbiased, they try to be apolitical, they don't endorse individual candidates, they take positions on issues, they, they study, they do their research, they draw on national and state data and, and concrete information. And I think that that creates a forum in which objective thinkers and, and individuals emerge. So I, I would feel fine, and I don't even know who the league members are that were referenced, I don't know them as names, I don't, don't know who they are, but I would trust the league process in bringing us the two individuals. My sense about it is, if we open it further, it's going to become sort of a political football perhaps, and there will be any number of ways to configure the group, and we'll have a lot of discussions, and the, you know, how will we make sure geographical equity is put, is there, and how will we have various special interest groups that are going to want a seat at the table? I mean, I think, I think we're going to have to spend quite a bit of time on the process to be fair and equitable to everyone concerned. So I just, I just think that the process before us, as outlined by the committee, is an adequate one, and I, and I, I support it. We could go down another path, and it doesn't mean I would object to seeking out another way to do it, but I think it's going to take considerable thought and more time to come up with assurances that it will be equitable. And I don't think just drawing names out of a hat will get us there. Supervisor McCellin?
Supervisor Hamburg, you had...
Yeah, I, but I didn't know which of us, I was kind of, I kept kind of knocking, you know, because I saw yours go up. I don't know if it's because it's late in the day, but, you know, I think there's, there's this tendency among elected officials to kind of want to control things a little bit more than sometimes I think we need to. And, you know, this argument about, well, you know, it'd be too, too random and too many people with special interests, and, you know, it, it's, you know, Lee Howard and I have, have some things in common. One thing we have in common is that we both served on a CAC that was very successful. And so we both sort of have a, a warm place in our bellies for CACs. And, you know, that was a pretty random, I don't know, maybe some of you were involved in it too, but, you know, back in the 80s, that was a pretty random process, you know, setting up the CACs. It was almost like a leap of faith on the part of the Board of Supervisors, didn't know what the hell to do after they'd been put under an injunction by a Superior Court Judge. And, and, you know, this hippie from Comche, Michael Nolan, came before the board and said, why don't we just set up these CACs and let these citizens write, you know, their general plan, area by area? And, you know, I'll be darned if it didn't happen and didn't work, and within two years we were out from under the injunction for about, I don't know, $400,000, we had a general plan. This time around, you know, I'm not even going to go into what's happened this time around. And, you know, it sounds like some of our arguments are kind of like, well, maybe we should hire a consultant to help us figure out how to construct the CAC. But, you know, I'm, I'm kind of with Johnny on this. I would not object to putting out some kind of a message to the voters about what we're doing and asking people to send in their names and send in the reason they're interested in this, and not give them, you know, not have a big window, have a 10-day window. And, you know, the people who are interested will respond. Most people won't even know what's happening, they won't even be paying attention, but people who are paying attention, who are the ones we want anyway, will sort of self-select themselves, and we can, you know, we can draw, you know, I don't know about the league, whether the league should have a special set aside for the league. I love the league, you know, I'm all for the league, but, you know, it kind of skews it, because if you're going to do the league, well, why don't you do this group? Or, you know, what about the, you know, National Women's Political Caucus, or the Democrats, or the Republicans, or, you know, maybe you should have, you know... So if you start doing one group, and I know, Kendall, that the league has a special kind of focus, so I don't have a strong feeling about that, but I'm really not against throwing caution to the wind and letting the citizens of the county guide this process.
Supervisor McCellin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Pinches kind of expressed support for the random factor, that we get these names and throw them in a hat. And I'm not quite sure Supervisor Hamburg, would, would this be a random thing, or would we get the names and then we would go through a process of making nominations to the committee from the names we get, or...
No, you don't want to do that.
We don't want that. We don't want you appoint, individually appointing folks, so it's got to be, I like the, I like the throwing in...
But we could let the staff look at them, and, I mean, if they were people who were like just doing it as a joke, you know, just put it in saying, you know, I mean, we want people who are of good intention. That's all, that's all.
I think that's all you're going to get. For instance, it don't exclude the League of Women Voters. If there's 10 members of that organization that want to do it, then all 10 of them should throw their name in the hat, and probably one or two or three or four of them is going to get pulled out. The real decision, I think, is to make is you want, you have your staff, and how many members do you want? Do you want a seven-member, or a 12, or a 20, whatever? That's the real decision you want. I don't think you're going to get hundreds of people apply.
Me neither.
But I think, like Dan said, the ones you're going to get apply have been paying attention, are interested in this process, and I think they'll be good members to the discussion. But the real decision here is, if you do that, do we want to, you know, have a, pull out of the hat seven people, or five people, or seven, or nine, or 11, or 13, whatever? That's, to me, that's the number. I'd rather see the number be larger than smaller. Because ultimately, it just comes back to a recommendation of this board anyway, right?
Correct.
Right, right.
We ultimately have to, this board has to ultimately rubber stamp what, what they're going to be, right?
Right, and this board will ultimately make the decision on the plan, so...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But, so I think that you're right. The first thing you should do then, if you want to do the CAC, expanded version of what we've recommended, then decide on the number today. We can publish a notice, a 10-day notice in the newspaper and receive applications, and then we have to decide how you select.
Does council have any recommendations on that?
I have a recommendation.
Why ask council?
Okay.
I'm willing to hear yours first.
Well, of course, Supreme Court's nine members, I don't think we need more than nine.
How was the question? Council?
It's a good enough for the Supreme Court, it'd be good enough for something like this.
I would just, I like the random approach, drawing from the hat, however you want to do it, in that fashion. I just want, I just don't want you individually having to pick or select folks, because that would not be appropriate for you.
And yet, we ultimately will make the final decision.
Well, no, if you draw a random name, that's going to be the person being selected.
We make the final decision on the action.
Yeah, right, but you're doing it free of, you know, selecting your own individual folks to sit on a committee to make those recommendations.
Well, if we get a list of names that gets submitted, and then we nominate off that list, we're not each handpicking our own people.
Well, you're selecting, you're selecting those folks that you want to sit on the committee, have sit on the committee.
No, it's a random selection, you just, if you put 50 people in the hat, you pull out the first nine, and that's a committee.
Yeah.
Simple as that, there's no, that way...
We won't get 50.
No, I'm just saying.
My God, we'll get 25.
Yeah.
That would be different than you personally saying, I recommend so-and-so to sit on this committee. That's what I want to avoid.
Yeah, you're just set on what you don't want us to do. You don't care as much as how the names get there, as long as we don't select.
The sleaziest thing that we can do as supervisors, go around and tell our friends to apply.
Exactly.
But none of us would do that.
Okay, Supervisor McCellin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we should consider having some mechanism, I think we should consider having some mechanism to see that we get some kind of regional representation, however. And just strictly pulling them out of a hat may not get us there.
Well, it's going to give you as good a chance as any.
Well, but again, you know, you could wind up with five people from Leightonville and none from Wallala. So maybe they're randomly selected, but within certain parameters, whether we do coastal North County inland, or the five supervisory districts, but some method to assure that there's regional representation. I think that's important.
I don't say it's not, but in order to point a committee that has a distance between us, I don't know how we could really do that. I would think that if, if you make your number of your committee fairly high, that's going to guarantee, pretty much guarantee you're going to get somebody from wherever.
No, it's pretty simple. They come in, and whether you decide regions of the county or supervisory district, they go into that hat, that hat, that hat, and instead of nine, we could have 10. I'm not worried the committee's going to deadlock.
Yeah.
Their decision should be something more than a 5-4.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion just for discussion.
Okay, I don't think at this point we even need to make a motion. We'd probably just direct staff to how we're going to go, but go ahead.
Well, I'd just make a motion to authorize the establishment of a citizens advisory committee consisting of nine members and authorize the direction and timeline stated above in the rest of the recommended motion.
But that still doesn't give us the method by which they're selected. So, council, are you thinking we can take that up later? We're just going to say we're going to do nine, and we're going to direct you to do the advertisement as you described, and we'll figure the rest out later?
I'm assuming that, yeah.
I'm going to second his motion, just so we have something on the floor. I like John's idea of dividing it into like three sections, and then your nine works better, like North County, South County, Coast, or something like that. And don't worry about supervisory, because we don't know what supervisory districts are going to be.
Exactly. Well, what we could do is, if you want to go with nine, then the applications get submitted, and staff could, could cull the applications together and put them in three different areas, and you would pick three different, you would draw from those three areas.
You've got to divide the county into three sections, though.
Sure.
Can we, can you redistrict to that degree?
Well, can't we just have our attorney do it? I mean, she's unbiased and going to do it. That way we're totally...
We've got to keep our hands off.
That's what I'm saying, if we can't...
Yeah, you do have to keep your hands off.
If we can't trust our attorney, then we need another one. I mean...
Well, you could basically just do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, let's just have our county council direct and do, take care of the process, all the way from advertising to getting the nine people for the citizens vice committee.
Well, the drawing should probably be a public event, though, you know? But I think, but I think staff could simply put a grid on the county map, and then when people come in, depending on where their address are, they fall into one of the three regions.
I'm happy as long as there's nine citizens out there on the committee. I don't care.
We're going to go to the, our clerk recorder, Sash.
Okay, let's make sure. It's my microphone on. May I make a suggestion? I like the geographic area, we can split it into three geographic areas if you want. Let us call them through, and like you suggested, put it into the three geographic areas, but perhaps leave the decision-making as to who's going to be on there from the three members up to the staff. If that's acceptable, that way your hands are off completely.
Well, it couldn't be more completely off than if it's a random drawing.
Well, it could be a random draw, or, you know, either way.
Well, why don't we just start with, if you, if everybody's in agreement with nine, or you, you have consensus on that?
We do have a motion.
Okay. You do that, and then we'll go ahead and advertise, and then we can bring back, you know, the process to the board in terms of...
Selection.
The selection. Maybe that's the way to handle it.
So, we see two league members that would like to address us, we see Mr. Howard who would like, just each person come forward and just, it's sort of a late, it's a late evening discussion, we're going to go away from our usual protocols of only...
I'm wondering where the league stands in all this. Are you saying yes to us, or are you saying no to us, that we have to be one of the ones that puts their names in the hat, or, I need to have something to take back to my league members? So please clarify our role.
Well, the motion states that, under the motion, it's nine citizen members of no distinct. So anybody from any organization can submit their name to the process.
So Jane, what I would glean from that would be a comment, a previous comment by Supervisor Pinches, that every league member that is interested in the process should submit their name.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you're saying also that they're going to be divided into the three geographical areas.
Right. So all league members obviously live in various parts of the county, then their names, if they submit, will go into the three ran, the areas that are not yet completely defined, but in general, we've just, we've reviewed that.
And depending on the amount of applications, you might end up having four, five members. Yeah, it might be all league members.
Okay, Ms. Matheson.
Most of the league members don't live in the...
Please come forward briefly.
Barbara Matheson. I just would suggest that when you put this out to the public, that the process be made very clear. Because when this happened statewide, we had several members that did apply and made it through several rounds. But the first thing everybody asks is, what is the process? If I'm putting my name in, how am I, what's my process of getting picked? So that has to be really clear.
Yeah, it would, I think it'll definitely have to come back to the board, because the, under the code, the board appoints the citizens advisory committee, so it'll definitely have to come back to you in some form. And I like the drawing idea, because then you're not, it's kind of blind for you.
So just, if we decide on, if the motion passed for the nine members, then you would come back with nine names, right?
Right.
And we, then at that time, we'd say yes or no.
But how would those nine names be chosen?
Well, I guess they, they would be pulled out of a hat, so to speak. You know, you would not see the names before you decided, before you selected them. Similar to what they do with the grand jury, the alternate grand jury members.
But that's done in an open public forum.
That's correct.
Where anyone can observe. So if we're going to have a random drawing, if you really want to have transparency, that would be done publicly.
It should be done in the meeting, yeah. I don't want that responsibility, quite frankly, Supervisor. I think it's, it should be the board's responsibility.
Good. Let's go to Mr. Howard, you wanted to make a final comment.
Yes, again, just to the, to the motion, or to speak. And I hear what you're saying, one, two, and three geographical areas, but if, just if you went five, one, two, three, four, five, you asked for two names, or you were going to set up for two people in each, Johnny, that'd make sure that somebody from your area would be on it. Kendall, the rest of, each one of the supervisors, you're not going to see those names. They're going to, when you ask, when this staff asks for names to come in, they're going to be put into the pot for first, second, third, and fourth. At some point in time, you're going to have a drawing for your district, for your district. It gives a better geographical area than what you're trying to set up right now. You're going to, two people from, maybe both of them will be from Covelo. But it, it is a better mix than what you're looking at.
What we're trying to do is, we need to have a wall between this and that process.
No, no, the wall's there, Johnny, the wall's there. The wall is the fact that these people ask, notify and ask for people that are interested in this from your district to fill in. When they file in here, they say, I'm from the first district. All of first district people's names go into one basket, second, third, and fourth, each one of them. That... you get two names out of that, if... and if you want to leave one shy, that's fine, nine. But you get two people out of each one of that. That's a total of 10 people.
I don't have a problem.
You take and...
It's just 10 instead of nine. That's really the big difference.
You know, Mr. Howard, I think you make a good point, because otherwise, the drawing of the delineation of the three areas has got to be arbitrary.
That's right.
And there's not going to be any easy way to do it.
Well, I'll make my motion to make it 10.
So I think it makes a good point. It doesn't mean that the names drawn support the current supervisory delineations, or they don't. It doesn't mean anything. They just live there.
You may... I may get in Dan Hamburg's basket, and I may be choosing. Dan's going to be mad as hell. You know, that's the simple fact of it. But let me just say one other thing. We have agreed to disagree over the years. Let me put one other thing while I still have this. There should be... I believe there's one caveat that needs to be put on this, and it may be a legal one, is that you need to be a registered voter to be sitting on this committee. You can't do any one of your committees.
I don't think you can do that. Can you sue them?
That's it.
Because it's based on total population.
It's part of county policy for appointments.
Again, this is the selection committee, and I think if you go look at the state requirements, that was a requirement on the state thing.
Now, it's our policy. Okay.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, so we're going back to the maker of the motion, who is changing his motion, and maybe I think on this one, it's going to be very important to have the clerk read back to us what it is. So Supervisor Pinches, you have changed it to...
10.
10 members, two from each currently... or each supervisory district. Is that correct?
That'd be fine. That'd be fine, yeah.
Okay.
To be drawn at random when we bring it back.
Draw at random, okay.
Okay, now, we got one other question. What about the registered voter issue? Two from each district's a big difference than two registered voters from each district.
Well, the statute says advisor... the board can appoint an advisory committee, but your own county policy with respect to appointments to advisory committees, you always require registered voters.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So then registered voters will be in there, too, and the second concurs. So now we'll get it... we'll get the motion read, and we'll go to Supervisor McCowen.
Motion by Supervisor Pinches, second by Supervisor Hamburg, to authorize the establishment of the citizen advisory committee consisting of 10 members, drawn, who must be registered voters, drawn from all five supervisory districts, and drawn at random, and authorize the direction and timeline as stated.
It should say two from each supervisory district.
You need to get two from each supervisory district.
Two from each supervisory district.
Okay.
Two drawn from each supervisory.
Okay. And then basically, it says, "Send copies of the minute order and agenda summary to all people recommended for this committee."
Yeah. And it'll direct the county council to handle this process, or...
We'll handle it together as a committee.
Okay, as a committee, okay, yeah.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen, did you want to make that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think it's... seems clear to the motion, but just to make absolutely certain, then the staff members that are identified would be staffed to the committee, but they would not be committee members. Is that the intention of the motion?
That's the intention, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then one other thing, and, you know, we've probably already massaged this, you know, beyond what it needed, but we do have the chance, based on random selection, that two people get drawn from Covelo, two people get drawn from Walala. So do we want to factor in that, you know, if you draw somebody from Covelo, then there needs to be some diversity, you know, they couldn't both be from...
It's too complicated.
Okay.
No.
No. I think we did it.
We'll see what random choice brings us.
What does random look like?
I have complete confidence in two registered voters from Covelo, just the same as I have confidence in two registered voters from Walala.
And they say that government work is more like a roulette wheel than a pendulum.
Okay, so we... all board members understand the motion?
Let's spin the wheel.
Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
I said, "Good job, Lee."
Okay, so we're going to go to... back to our regular business. We still have a few more things to conclude with.
Was it worth waiting?
Okay, we have the Department of Transportation report. Any board comments on that? We'll accept the report.
Just a lengthy report, yeah.
CEO, does the CEO have a report for the board? Okay, that's fine.
Madam Chair, I'll try to make this as brief as I can. I think that's on... okay. You have the CEO report, and you also have two attachments to it, so if I can just very briefly go over some of the key points on this. There certainly has been a lot of talk today about the February 15th list of options that the executive office presented to this board. That was in light of general fund reallocation as this board chose or was needed. The bid came back today, the Business Improvement District, for their presentation. And since the bid was approved today, then I will take the bid off of that list and consider the action of the board today as final action on the 300,000 general fund. Also, just want to make a comment that we are working with the departments on full cost recovery. That is coming on April... on April 5th, along with GSA's space report. We are participating in the CSAC realignment phone conferences. And also, for the fiscal year 11-12 budget development, I just wanted to alert this board. When the retirement board received Buck's actuarial report, then they also received the EFI audit this month. So based on that action, there's a short delay in the retirement board and the retirement administrator giving the county the numbers regarding salary, our salary projection. So basically, the employer contribution for fiscal year 11-12. We were planning on giving instructions for the fiscal year 11-12 budget build to the departments in early March, basically, early this month. But based on the second audit with the retirement board, then the salary projections and the instructions to the departments will not go out till the end of this month. That will not cause a delay in our overall budget schedule, though. We talked about the mid-year budget report and the follow-up directives. Those are coming forward, obviously, the bid today. Then also, the museum had their presentation today as well. We'll have more of those directives will be coming forward on the 15th, the 22nd, and then April 5th. Regarding the museum, the museum funding was on the list of options for possible reallocation for higher priority functions. Certainly, based on the discussion today and what I believe is a consensus of this board, I will not be bringing the museum back for funding redirection. Under legislation, the executive office transmitted an alternate appropriations list to Congressman Thompson for fiscal year 2012, and that was based on our 2011 platform. That letter is attached. I would like to apologize from the executive office on that letter. The wrong letterhead was used on that. It should have been the Board of Supervisors' letterhead. It was the executive office. My apologies for that. But there will be follow-up with Congressman Thompson on the appropriations. And then also, under Public Resources, four of us went to Sunnyvale on Friday, and the staff will report out on March 22nd. I have to say, it was a very interesting meeting with the Sunnyvale staff, and I think it was quite informative and really gave us a better understanding of what was so impressive to our supervisors that went to Sunnyvale. February 23rd was the Stormwater Ordinance Workshop, and we had our staff presenting on the Stormwater Ordinance. There are approximately 100 community members. That was put together by the ABC Coalition, and a letter will be forthcoming from the ABC group requesting additional information. Let's see. We will be getting... we will be welcoming our first interns within the next couple of weeks. And as everyone knows, the county has been short-staffed in all of our departments, and we're looking forward to having one or two political science interns from Mendocino College. We will be introducing them to you, and we're hoping to utilize them to really work with all of us on policy, and they'll get a good understanding of local government. I think the rest is pretty much just some scheduling. And the last thing, though, is on March 9th, Mendocino Futures is working with California Forward and doing a local forum with government leaders and with the community. You have an attachment that I gave you on the report that talks about that. It's just, "Speak up for California. Join California Forward and Mendocino Futures for a critical conversation about our state and its future. Share your ideas on how to move California in the right direction closer to its people." That's March 9th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in Willets at the Little Lake Grange. As far as who should attend, could be anyone, nonprofit leaders, city and county governments, healthcare representatives. And it is an opportunity to give input, so there's a flyer there. This is California Forward's initiative, which is Speak Up California, a statewide conversation about what will fix California. I'm not sure that any of us know, but we're going to try real hard. And so you can see their plan there. And that is my report. I'm open for questions.
Supervisor Pinches.
Where's the May 5th... or the May off-site meeting?
We have not... I would ask Ms. Rantella, did we determine a site for the May 5th meeting yet? On my report, it says, "Off-site board meeting, determine location."
Yeah, we were talking about Anderson Valley, and we're looking into that, but it's really up to the board on where they want to go.
But staff is pursuing options for that, and I've engaged with at least one community member trying to work that out, and I think we're on that path. Supervisor Hamburg?
Just curious, who's going to go to that Little Lake Grange meeting?
I am.
You're probably not going to go, John?
I might.
I might.
I was just trying to decide if I want to go. You're all going to be there.
Thank you, and I would say on California Forward...
How are you going to advise the state on budget issues when nobody from the state's there?
This is a grassroots initiative. California Forward, the very fact that they're coming here to Willets and that, you know, it's a collaborative effort with Mendocino Futures, I think, says a lot for our grassroots efforts here. It's absolutely open to the public. They expect about 100 people to show up. And they chose Willets because it's such a great location and it's centrally located. It's in your district.
There's a guy in Willets running for governor. That's the hammer.
I'm trying, but, you know, maybe it just doesn't matter.
What's that?
I'm trying to speak.
Please, Supervisor.
The chair called on me. Thank you, Chair Smith. On California Forward, that was one initiative and group that spoke to the CSAC during the legislative conferences back in 2009. And it is a group that has been at CSAC's legislative gatherings, well, 2010, and I believe there were representatives at the annual meeting as well. So there are several groups going. I did email CSAC, and they went, "Great, hope you can be there." Encouraged as many possible to go. I think it's a good way to get feedback from constituents and what they're feeling about the California budget and what they would like to see as change. When I'm looking at this letter to Representative Mike Thompson, why did we only bring out biomass? And I'm part of the biomass working group, but I want to know why that was singled out.
I can explain that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, sure. Well, I... this happened very suddenly, and we were up against a deadline, and I work with staff to say, "We need to get something out." I did not draft the letter. Executive office staff worked on the letter, and the only... It was basically saying, Supervisor Tom... I mean, Congressman Thompson, we appreciate your support. We appreciate that you're trying to go through an alternative process, given that the regular appropriations process pretty much is zero for going forward. So I think the only intent of mentioning biomass, it was basically just referenced as an example. It was something that last year received unanimous support of our three elected officials, Thompson, Boxer, and Feinstein. That process is pretty much ground to a halt. It was only an example of, gee, we're trying to do things that are innovative and going forward. That was the only reason that it was mentioned. And that we still really need to address how we're going to bring you something that would be in this alternative realm of funding. There were not... there will not be, is my understanding, at least presently, specific earmarks in the various categorical areas that we've talked about. So we need to kind of revisit this concept and see kind of what our thinking would be. And in my conversations, it would be regional is where... is where the thinking is going, like we're doing with the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. Those are the kinds of things that they're going to entertain.
Well, I've been on the biomass working group, but I was just curious, with the whole platform, why that was singled out.
Just because it's received wide support within the county, not that there are no controversies connected. Wide support is just one thing we're working on. We felt that we made good progress, probably better than any other item that we brought forward last year in terms of something, putting Mendocino County on the map for something it was doing with respect to economic development and energy cultivation within the county. It was just an anecdotal thing, you know, we've been working on this as an example. That was all. That was all it meant. It didn't mean anything about support or not support of anything. It was just... it was just illustrative of... Something that was... received the broadest support last year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just for maybe the working group on biomass information, an Australian company recently come in and purchased two existing biomass plants in Humboldt County. And they are... it will affect our Mendocino County job base and whatnot to the positive, to a great deal, I believe, here, probably starting as early as the spring. I'm not really at liberty to say some of the details. I know, because I was told in confidential. But it is public knowledge that it's been an Australian company that has purchased two existing biomass plants in Humboldt County, and they're... it's going to be... we talked about... it's going to be a regional. So you're going to see whether the government intervenes with... there's a lot of out-of-country money coming in in the investment in the area of biomass. So it's going to be a good thing for Mendocino County.
Supervisor, the hours late, I think we need to just... that was on the CEO's report. So I think we need to continue to move on through the agenda. I don't think so.
We have one item for closed session, and that person is waiting.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I have a comment to the letter, and, you know, it really doesn't quite add up. I mean, the initial letter from the congressman is dated January 31st, and what he requests is critical infrastructure improvements.
Right.
And then he has five bullet points of what he wants for those projects.
Right.
And the letter that we send in reply, I don't think you could really call a biomass project a critical infrastructure improvement, but also unless there was an attachment, we didn't send any of the information that he's requesting.
Supervisor, I can explain that. Basically, the letter that was presented as a place... It's basically... it was something to get to the congressman, because staff, you know, no one really had addressed this in a timely manner. So it was... all we were trying to do was get something to the congressman within the time deadline. The time deadline was Friday, and so that was the best that the staff could do under the... under the...
Well, with all due respect, he did want all of this information by the 25th.
He did. You're right.
And so the fact that we mentioned a non-infrastructure project, we don't mention the infrastructure projects that we do have on our list.
We... it's... we don't... we didn't...
We do.
It's not the chair. It's the staff did not... you know, it just basically didn't get done.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
So it was... I recommended that we get at least a letter out.
Okay, but it would have been simple to pull the infrastructure projects off the approved list and submit them.
The thinking is, is that that was way, way too vast, and that that is not going to make it within the present environment. We need to regroup, bring it back, and have some...
If I could just make a comment. I'm not certain about where this letter went on... from dated January 31st. It arrived with my staff on the Wednesday before the Friday.
Right.
And at that point in time, we couldn't get it to the board before we submitted anything. So we worked with the chair to get something in by Friday. We also spoke with Congressman Thompson's office and learned that this is basically a soft deadline. So as Chair Smith has said, we submitted something as a placeholder with the intent to bring this back to this board. This is... so this board, full transparency, you know what has happened. We had a couple of days to work on this, and there wasn't a board meeting. So there, you know, no excuses for the fact that some of you are not pleased with the letter. But again, this was a placeholder. It wasn't the end-all. But what we did know in speaking with Congressman Thompson's staff is that we couldn't submit the whole platform. You know, that was just... it would have landed up in the round file, so we just did a placeholder. And what we should talk about is future action from here.
And I did not write the letter. Staff composed the letter and put my signature on it.
I agree with Supervisor McCowen, but I also agree, I mean, this letter's better than nothing submitted. It's like a pretty... but on the bigger... I'm not so sure it's worth the stamp to put on it, because they're not moving forward with any earmarks right now, anyway.
That's right. Supervisor Hamburg, did you have a comment on that?
Yep.
Okay. So let's move forward. Supervisor Brown wanted an opportunity to go revisit the board assignments and...
I don't.
Did we do the news?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. California Forward was already mentioned by the CEO. I did have that in my report, and there is a Resource Conservation and Development Council meeting tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. here in this building. I think last month it was in Santa Rosa. I've attended a number of meetings, I'm just going to be really quick, the hour is late, I think we're all getting tired. I attended Fishnet For Sea, and we'll talk with Supervisor Hamburg about all that was discussed there, and bring it back for a longer report in two weeks, next board meeting. We, I had a subcommittee for IWPC moving forward on a public relations plan. I'm working on that subcommittee with Redwood Valley County Water District Director Hal Vogt. I also attended yesterday in person, and Supervisor Hamburg was on the phone for the USDA Regional Food Systems Network. I think we're getting it figured out a lot better, I think we've got a game plan, and we will be moving forward, longer report, maybe next time. I was also on a number of the realignment telephone calls on the, you know, technical issues for each one of the areas, financing for the state, criminal justice, Health and Human Services, and the list goes on. The Board of Directors for CSAC had a conference call last Friday, just so they were updated and onboard. I'm not sure if another one will occur, I will keep you updated. And then we do have a Board of Directors meeting in Sacramento that will occur, and I think it's March 25th. Just received an update on that yesterday, but have not had the chance to read it. I also attended last week the Policy Council on Children and Youth. They are looking at updating their membership list, also working on bylaw changes, and there is a lot of concern about what the state is going to do to children's programs, youth programs, the funding. They're very concerned about mental health issues for children and youth, and the services that we provide right here locally, I think we had a discussion this morning, and there's more on that, but due to the hour, I'm going to move forward.
I had one comment from this morning, didn't cover everything. The retirement board, as was mentioned by the CEO, did move forward on the adoption of the actuarial evaluation report. It was after much discussion, getting the information, the additional information from the follow-up audit from EFI. The EFI person was there, there were a number of members from the public, there were quite a few questions, he did an excellent job, spent really quite a bit of time with the board, answering all questions. We did go ahead and adopt the, the numbers that had come forward previously, and, and not wanting to hold it up any longer. The board could have decided to have EFI do a more further investigation, but in thinking of what that would mean directly to the county for further delays in the budget preparation, after quite a bit of discussion of the retirement board, it was, the decision was to go ahead and adopt the previous rates that were outlined. We also accepted the independent audit for the year, and we are also going to be looking at going out in our key process for auditing services going forward, as we have done for the actuarial services and for our management consultants. So we've gone full circle with all of the advisors to the retirement system in the last, I'd say, it'll be probably in a two-year period, going for review of all of those and making some different decisions. And I have all the complete actuarial information and items from that February 16th meeting. If any board member would like copies of any of that material, I can certainly get that to you. I just wanted to make sure that was covered in the report. Yes?
Supervisor Smith, it was pointed out to me this morning, whether, the Buck Audit Report and then the other one, there was a huge discrepancies within the two. Like the total book value of the retirement system, there's a $43 million difference.
There were a number of discrepancies, but the, the point that I was commenting on, the point of the decision-making that we were at was on accepting the rate of contribution that, and we'll be getting a full report here, we'll be coming forward in March to this body.
I understand, but, but when, when the, when they can't even get together on the, the actual total value of the retirement system, it's $43 million difference?
Well, it's...
That's, that's, I mean, what's going on?
Well, I think that it depends on, you know, certain factors were talked about as well, we're, we're not agreeing on certain sets of information, other things we agree.
But even the point of your contribution was $5 million off between the two.
Yeah, it's true.
They're huge. We're not talking about small numbers, we're talking, the total book value of the retirement system, one guy says it's, it's 300 million, the other guy says it's 343 million.
There are clearly...
I mean, that's, we're not talking about small differences.
That's, there are clear discrepancies, so now we have EFI...
Well, it makes you wonder if either one of them are right.
Well, let me, let me know what, what we will be doing. What we will be doing is going out for new actuarial services going forward, because EFI was only going to critique the retrospective information in the RFP when they were selected, is they are not allowed to, to be the ongoing actuarial firm. That was a safeguard put into the, to the RFP process. So we'll be taking a look at options going forward. Okay. So, any more supervisory reports? Supervisor McCowen?
Yes, Madam Chair, just briefly, the Mental Health Board did meet, and an ongoing discussion are changes to the Mental Health Services Act Plan, which does involve cutting services because the money from the state is declining, it's going to continue to decline, and in fact, that's the story across the board in Health and Human Services. It was really a very sobering meeting, because I think everyone should be aware that Director Crier expects that social service funding from the state and federal combined is going to decline 20% to 30% next year. So if we think we've seen cutbacks so far, next year is going to be a very rough year.
Twenty to 30% below this level, year's level revenues?
Correct. An additional 20% to 30% decline, and that's even if there's no change to realignment, which depending on what happens there, could be even worse.
Supervisor Brown? Thank you, Chair Smith. I just wanted to ask Supervisor McCowen, a consultant wrote a report, have you heard complaints with your board of understanding that report totally, and with the consultant?
With the Mental Health Board?
Correct.
The revised Mental Health Services Act Plan was pretty vague.
Please, please, let's not have side conversations.
The revised Mental Health Services Act Plan was admittedly vague on what the impact would be to specific programs, and for instance, this report was based on a form that the state provides, and one of the key areas was asking, are services going to be eliminated? And because adult services are still going to be provided, children's services are still going to be provided, the correct answer was, no, services are not going to be cut. Well, of course, they are being cut, they're being reduced, but they're not being eliminated. So that created a lot of confusion when that first came out, and Director Crier did clarify that, and the consultants clarified that at the meeting. I don't think people were happy with the answer, but it was clearer to them that nobody is saying, "We're not eliminating programs, individual programs, we're still providing the overall service to the overall class of people." But obviously, if you're drastically cutting the amount of money you have to work with, you're going to be cutting service.
Okay.
So if you add the 20% to 30% that's projected in the future, and add that to the 20%, 30%, we're, we're, we're talking about our most, like, services like that over a 50% reduction.
Well, it's getting into that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's go to the outstanding appointments master list that we have.
I'll make a motion for the approval.
Second.
I have questions.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Pinches to approve the slate of, of, before us, we have a second by Supervisor McCowen, so we'll go to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you very much, Chair Smith. I didn't bring it up earlier, but if you will look, oh, which page? It would be under, it's about the third page, Mendocino County Museum Advisory Board. There is a candidate available for appointment, but it shows all these districts with term expirations, and I haven't received any applications. I was going to say something, but I, and I have spoken to Director Glassy about it two, three months ago, and it's embarrassing to me, but I didn't want to bring it forward, so I would like, if this board concurs, I'd like to instruct the CEO to maybe start facilitating these being in, because if they haven't been reappointed, they're not really representing the advisory board or the museum. It needs to be cleaned up.
Well, for instance, I see where I have an opening on my Plant, Third District Planning Commissioner.
Yeah.
I want to reappoint, and I thought it was no, Jim Little to it, but it's not, I thought that was done, but it's not, it don't shows. Anyways.
So, CEO, I guess we'll note this, and we'll look at the appointments process in general, and specifically the museum issue.
Right, and Madam Chair, we, we have one of our staff who is devoted solely to bringing this up to date, and we've realized that it really hasn't been updated for a few years, so, but we'll work on a process to be certain that you get the information if there's an appointment due.
But I truly called or emailed Director Glassy saying, "We're the applications," because this has been a year and a half, I think. And the applications, I'm not faulting the CEO's office or clerk of the board, I'm just saying we need to clean that up, and I didn't want to embarrass the citizens earlier today, but I want to get it done.
Well, possibly, our chief counsel could speak to Director Glassy to get that information for you.
But also, the appointments in place is still the appointee until they're, they're replaced. So it's, even though it shows blank in these, like my planning commissioner's place, my third district museum board is still in place until, even though it says on this sheet here that the term's expired and it doesn't show a name, the person that's in place is still in, in that position, right?
Yes, they serve until reappointed.
Yeah, it indicates to me that maybe they're not interested. So do I go out and seek another appointee? I mean, this has to get done, and if the director or the museum is not going to communicate that, I'm upset, okay?
I, I don't know, I...
That's not, that's not the museum or any, that's between the CEO's office and the board.
Well, just to make a comment, I, I thought that, that we were alerting the board when there was a position open, and when we had someone who wanted to fill that position. If that's not happen, happening, we will correct that immediately. Regarding the museum director, her communication with this board has been directly, the museum director with this board. So I think, you know, in that case, if there is some intervention that needs to be done, I certainly could intervene. I don't know that I'll get a response, but county counsel may.
Well, if I may, this was a function that was done when the board had the clerk of the board's office over there. It's just a, an oversight, something that needs to be picked up, but now it's really responsibility of the clerk of the board, CEO's office, to make the board members aware of their appointees, whether you want to reappoint that person or go out and get somebody else.
Supervisor Brown?
It's not really up to the department heads, like a library or the museum or whatever, it's not.
Well, I respectfully disagree. We just sat as the board of trustees, and I have contacted the director in the past of the museum, it needs to get done, and there's many ins and outs, it's the same with Mental Health Board. They, anyone you nominate has to go through an interview process and all these other things, you know, some of those do take time, and applicants sometimes may be offended in the process. And as a new supervisor, learning all that was one thing, and I've tried to keep this list up, but, you know, I, I'm just at a loss as to why these museum applications have not come forward where Ms. Maddercole has.
I, I think Supervisor Brown, that possibly, and I'm not sure, because I'm just not positive, but I think some of these have gone forward as being noticed as being open. So I think maybe the CEO could look in, because I think that they have, I think I did hear that the fourth district, for instance, had. So I think that what we need is a better process of internally of when, you know, another noticing system, something that when the positions are open, we clearly get notification. I think sometimes we do, but maybe some have fallen through the cracks and we haven't.
But Holly's appointment was the city of Willet's appointment, not the, not this board's appointment.
Right. But I think Supervisor Brown's point is that once there's, it's getting taken care of, and the others may not have been.
It's being taken care of by the CEO and the clerk of the board. Here it is, it's on our appointment list. I'm concerned about the other.
But I think the city of Willet's forwarded.
It's the city of, yeah, acted on it. So we need to know more, what is our internal process about supervisory appointments to, as in this example, the museum, and just, and I agree with Supervisor Brown, we've got to figure out how to clarify that and get it, get it clear for everybody, the public and the board, so we know.
But, but the CEO's office does give us a list of the to, total list of where the vacancy are and appointments, we do get a list of that theoretically, that's separate from this list.
Right, right. Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, in defense of staff and administration, the, the whole universe of appointments is very confusing and complicated, it's different for almost every board. It's a real challenge to, you know, to, to keep control of it, but I do think that it is a little misleading the way the information is presented, because for instance, with your planning commissioner, and maybe with your museum rep, it's represented like there's a vacancy, there's not really a vacancy, there's a person serving there, we're not going to advertise for a new appointment for the planning commissioner. So maybe instead of saying term expiration, it should say appointment, reappointment, and so we know, okay, that, that term is rolling over, and yeah, a lot of these, we're going to publicly notice them, even if the incumbent wants to stay, but it's a little different level of urgency if I still have a representative sitting in that chair as opposed to there's an actual vacancy because someone resigned. So maybe we could do something to clarify the, the type of vacancy, and if there really is one.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we're, we're meeting tomorrow on some of these items, and we could shore up the process and report back in the next CEO report to the board.
Excellent. Okay, so any other business coming forward for board members?
We need to vote on the motion.
Oh, we need to vote, we did, we did it, but we didn't vote, that's right, we went into the discussion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion on the master appointments list is unanimous. Okay, any other business, anything from the clerk? Anything from council? No? Okay, then we will adjourn, and our next meeting date is going into closed session?
Can we go into closed session immediately? We're keeping them waiting.
We certainly should do that, I guess.
Yeah, evaluation.
We have our department head waiting, I, I could tell him to go home, or have him meet us in the conference room.
So the, I'm going to poll the board, it's very, very late.
If he's waited here this long, let's have him come in.
Okay.
He should have been home by 9:00.
So I guess we're going to go forward?
Closed session.
He wants to get it done.
It's tonight.
All department heads want to get it done.
So, okay, so we'll go forward?
Okay.
Okay.
I will have him meet us in the conference room.
All righty, so we will adjourn.
Somebody tell me, wait, okay, I haven't responded, somebody tell me what to do.
Two of us actually have a 6:30 engagement.
So it's up to, I polled the board a minute ago, and I was hearing more, like, we need to go forward, so.
He's waited here till 7:00, let's have him come in and talk to him and let him go home. He don't want to wait here till 7:00 to find out if it continues to another day.
I'm fine, you tell me, somebody give me directions.
I'm with them, and we'll be late.
Maybe we ought to quit scheduling evaluations on board meeting days.
Well, you know, we could set a separate date to do evaluations once a month. Well, you know, we could set a separate date to do evaluations once a month, if you would like.
So I guess we are going forward with the performance evaluation, closed session, and we will report out after closed session. Well, yeah, but...